I'd like to welcome everyone. The hybrid planning board meeting of May twenty second. Get the fourth order and straighten.
Yeah.
Mr. Lucio.
Yeah.
It's totally not here, Mr. Owen. Still good.
Yeah. Yeah.
And everyone, if I didn't have a forum tonight, I'd like to remind all board members, guests to be, and to be recognized by the chair. If you wish to speak. And this meeting being recorded. First on the, I'd like to just congratulate Sue Philbert for our elections of the planning board. And the first one will be reelection to the planning. Next item on the agenda is the acknowledged correspondence. Yeah, I said town of Wenham, city of Foster rezoning amendments, North Shore home consortium. EDP regarding Manchester Marine. And that is letter from Marine I alone on the kid team, and a letter from his cohort on the. Besides.
So Ron, can I just, you know, as we're doing these policies, procedures, rules, regulations? So things do need to change. We used to list this. Take the temperature. Like where are things changing? Why are we changing? We still look at correspondence. Agenda. But those few meetings, we haven't listed them. So I'm like, if someone giving direction not to list them anymore? Um. You know, no, no.
You know, they don't come when they come to me.
So that's the other thing. I think when they come, they should probably come to us because we, we don't seem to get them. I'm like in the packet. If they came two weeks ago, it'd be nice to just to review things as they come versus, you know, having thirty six hours. They're in the packet when they come. So we could, why, we can. You can look at the packet.
We can talk about this. This is not on the agenda. I want to move on.
So I was just trying to see if there's an easy answer to that.
I'd like to allow public comment on that items on the night on the agenda. Does anyone wish to speak?
Um, if I may, Ron.
Go ahead, Ben.
I just wanted to remind everybody that the agendas are done by the chair. And that's who sets the agenda. So I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else would like to speak? First item on the agenda and is the cell signaling technologies, parking requirement for discussion. Opinion of the on use of their parking proposal. That we are. I see wrote a few paragraphs in your report, some new comments.
So our zoning bylaw, the closest thing that comes to. You know. Laboratory manufacturing, that type stuff is. Is business and professional officer, bank or financial institution or requires one parking space for three hundred square feet of building. Given that cell signaling is proposing two hundred and fifty thousand in two phases. That would generate over eight hundred parking spaces, which I think we might all agree that that's not exactly the category that it's in. And I think we'd all agree that there's a lot of facilities out there with a sea of parking that doesn't get used. So I ended up looking online to see what other communities do, and then it's a whole range of anything from two, two point five parking spaces per thousand square feet to number of employees to. One space per thousand. So it's all over the place. And so I was driving actually on one twenty eight this morning and the cell signaling group in Beverly, they have a fairly large parking lot. And I noticed that, you know, it was, I drove in and it was fairly full, but there were still a lot of empty spaces. And I don't, I, I think it would be interesting to understand in cell signaling's facilities, how many parking spaces they have presently? And whether that meets the need or whether they need more or less. So I don't know if, if Mark Lutske is on the call, but I think it, you know, would be beneficial to ask at least that question. I also think that, so there, the way their numbers were working is roughly thirty percent of the parking spaces. They were saying roughly seventy percent of their employees were on site at a given time. So that's what they would need. They would need a full hundred percent because nobody is there. Hundred percent.
So then that's roughly five hundred people.
Right, right. And I'd also hoped that Paul Orlando would weigh in on it a little bit.
It seems to me our parking regulations are to do purpose, the purpose is to do two things. One in the, is to keep your pervious, your impervious, our impervious surface to a minimum and reduce natural disturbances. And the other is to make sure that parking doesn't spill out into and cause traffic or other hazards. So I think on the, on both of those, their proposal meets that criteria. And if they want to make the spaces, it seems like they have a person who's expert in that telling them. And that that advice is actually has, it has a marginal cost for them to make those spaces slightly bigger. So I guess, and the other, then, so that's why I commented, I don't, didn't see a problem with giving them a nod. My question is, we're not yet in site plan review. And they're proposing a four story garage that we haven't seen or assessed against the site plan review special permit criteria. So in terms of guidance on number of parking spaces, I'm fine with what they propose as terms of larger size. I'm fine with what they propose. I don't have an objection conceptually to a parking garage. But I'd like to, so, so if they're looking for guidance, maybe we can frame our response to them as guidance rather than as a definitive, because it is part of a larger site plan review. So like, maybe that's, this, this last part is kind of a question for you about. I mean, I don't want to say, yeah, we're fine with the four story garage until we've seen how it sits on the land and what its storm drainage is and its views and, and other things.
And then the other thing too is in all likelihood. This board is probably going to want to hire a transportation consultant to review it. And they may want to make suggestions on parking. And then also. You know, we're going to have some.
We have some public input, which we're, we'll have a benefit of a public hearing. So I think it's hard to know, you know, I know they want to, they want guidance as to whether or not we think they're headed directionally the right way. So I guess in a non binding affirmation that their direction seems fine, that would be at least my opinion, but I guess I don't want to imply of something that. Besides the thirty percent of the smaller vehicle size, what exactly were they looking particularly? That's what I think they were asking for, right? They know, and they brought up their Beverly sites and their other sites. And based on the usage, they thought this is what would meet their needs. So I think they're experts on what they need. They should know that. So I think what they're asking for is do we, the smaller parking sizes, right? So I think that's the, that the only.
And the number.
And the number, yeah. So I think if we draft our opinion with those two things specifically and excluding everything else. That should cover it. Or the number that I understood it was because, the question about the number was because we don't have the lab.
Standard, right.
Standard, and we don't have. I, well, I appreciate you looking to see what else we had that sort of close. Those uses are more retail.
It was all over the place. Now, there was a lab standard, but.
Right. I was just talking about what was in town. Like, we don't really have anything that applies because retail is going to transform more. So it's different. So I, I I would say that the work that their consultant Walker Parking is doing is, seems to be reasonable so far. I think we need to, what we're asking for in the last meeting was for them to kind of justify the environmental benefits, the site benefits of doing what they're doing. And I, I get the standardizing all the spaces because the compact cars really do create some inefficiencies. And sometimes you do that in existing garage when you're trying to work around columns and stuff, but they're building new. So it seems to me it's in the right direction. I, I think again, we can, we can talk about the numbers and the you know, the kind of quantity they need in the, in the space that seems like meets industry, acceptable industry standards and, and hold up on the site plan review. But I don't have a problem on the face of it with a four story garage. I think trying to minimize the footprint while still thinking ahead to the, you know, the view show that we'll now analyze in the site plan review is seems headed in the right direction to me.
Chris was.
So I agree with Laura and Sarah, I think, and I guess Christina. What I, I'd like to build a little bit on what Betsy was talking about, which is what's happening at their other facilities, because that's the best guidance we have. I'd like to know what the actual ratio of parking spaces per employee exists on the other facilities? And also what their average use of the parking at each of those facilities might be. I'm sure they can get those numbers. I'd also ask anecdotally whether they could tell us whether parking changed before and during COVID was, is there, how much of it got lost or how much less of a need for parking was there during COVID? And do they, are they basing their assumptions on COVID or whether that's their work model going forward?
They do have a couple.
Touched on that a bit because there's a lot of.
The chair, could you just? He asked to be recognized because I, I say that every year. That's kind of, I don't want to have, I don't want to have some fun. So. Do I have to be recognized?
I think they touched on that. And I think a majority of the positions at this new location would be lavatory seats. And they do need to be present. And I think they touched on that this would, wouldn't be affected by the COVID numbers, as I recall. I mean, if we need to clarify that, but they said the people that are still working remotely, they really didn't factor into. I mean, that's what I recall from the, when they were here two weeks ago.
I guess I'd just like to see the data and some, just to make sure we're all within the same. Right on.
There, they do touch on the trask lane. Numbers in their presentation, trask site parking capacity supports this Manchester model with three hundred and thirty four spots easily accommodating the three hundred and eighty trask based workers with significant excessive, excess parking. And I think they did talk about how COVID to remove them to the, as so many places with some people hybrid. So I think they touched on it. They may, we could probably get more specific data, but. So maybe if we could ask Betsy to, you know, I'll make a motion and we ask Betsy to indicate our willingness to forego compact car spaces. And to provide guidance to them that their parking counts look reasonable. And as they present their site plan review, site plan and special permit application, that they should more quantitatively substantiate those numbers based on their use at their other facilities. And then we look forward to seeing their specific garage. You know, the site plan review of their garage as part of their larger package.
Long motion.
Sorry. And take any other accent there to relate in there too.
So I, I would just say that to Chris's point, if they're going to look at other facilities, I would say that they have two, two other facilities, the one that's closest to the work that's going to be performed. Probably have the most valuable traffic counts. So to your motion, is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Or?
Point of discussion on the Danvers facilities that it is almost completely excludes any other way of getting there except for by car, I think. I mean, certainly coming from one twenty eight, you're not going to bite a bite or walk. So there may be, I heard them say last time they were considering shuttle. I think we're trying to right size the parking, but not overbuild parking. And so if there are beyond the comparison they're making for their existing facilities, if they have plans for how to incentivize help people get out of their cars, that would be information we want to know as well.
Asking for.
No, that's great.
Amendment.
Yes, of course, for all the other relevant stuff, right?
Okay. Any other comments or discussion? On the motion? If you want to repeat it.
Betsy's got it.
Dale's got it. Yep, Dale's got it. Dale definitely has it. Okay.
Okay, on Sarah's motion. To approve. This is unanimous, six zero. Good. Any other discussion on cell signaling? So I asked Chuck down to cover prior to our public hearing, actually Mary and Chris both asked to give us a short presentation on the facilities plan of the so Chuck, if you're here. So you could just listen up, hey?
Sure. So for the facility plan specifically, we're in full swing. We had met with a couple folks. We met with Ron on the planning board, but we also met with Steve Gang as well as Greg, administrator and the police chief to go through. And basically, we're in the point now where we're doing a kind of interview with, you know, all interested parties, see if there's anything in previous studies or, you know, prior institutional knowledge that we're not privy to, to see if there's any, you know, kind of silver bullets or a stolen left on turn that we can run down on facility planning for the entire town. Also, kind of on a parallel path to that, part of the scope for the consultant is to look at kind of existing uses, places around town that we were using already, how they're implemented, as well as meet with the different department heads and make sure that, you know, what they're doing now is what they see they're going to need in the future. And, you know, whether it's, you know, in just in terms of space or just programming needs or, you know, things that are things they need for their accreditation, stuff like that. So police and fire, obviously, that would be accreditation process. So so all comes saying, look at, you know, where we stand today. There's been several sites, I'm sure all of you know better than I do about the town master plan. So they've been reviewing the different things from the town's master plan in terms of renewing facilities and keeping ahead of, you know, certain criteria, climate change, you know, retreating versus other things. So we're taking all that into account. We are, they said we've met with some of the, you know, interested parties, but now we're looking more at existing spaces and where they stand today versus, you know, in the, you know, ten, twenty year timeline. We need to get a report or it's draft report back to, you know, the town, all the trust party. I'm sure we'll have another presentation with the select board at some point. So we'll get that. I would expect that this summer, the next probably two months. So generally where we are, I'm not sure if there's any other thing you want me to hit on, Ron, but.
Any questions from the board?
Well, the, the, the consultant did come in and give a presentation to the select board. So that's on YouTube and available. But the gist of that presentation was looking at town owned parcels. And so is there any parcels that, you know, are owned by the town or, you know, might be M E C T or, you know, private ownership that, you know, could be something that we could pursue as well? That was not very much. You know, the, the town owns a lot of property, but a lot of it's conservation restricted or has no access to, you know, the roads or would be of any use to a facility. So, you know, we're we're up against it when it comes to that kind of stuff. But, you know, there's a couple parcels. Obviously, we have existing sites that might need to be redeveloped as part of this. So that's what we're looking at. Certainly, if anybody has any, you know, four or five acre parcels they're looking to get rid of, then look at closer. That would be something to be interested in.
The abandoned compost facility.
So I didn't want to steal the thunder, you know, it's a larger presentation coming up in the future. But so right now, we are in the process of relocating the compost facility from School Street over to Pine Street. So I won't steal the thunder, but, you know, we, we have been looking at that for a long time. We've done citing analysis of both, not to rule out one versus the other at a much earlier stage in the project. And we have a lot to say about that tonight, but, you know, I think we're heading in the right direction and obviously work is ongoing on that. So and part of the consultant's work for the game after the facility master plan is to, we, we've already done a citing analysis of would it be better or, you know, what are the pros and cons of utilizing that school street site versus our existing site as a D P W? Prior studies have looked at it in terms of police and fire, public safety. But there's, there's definitely going to be an element of this facilities master plan report where we kind of see you know, what the, it's, it's going to be a mess. There's going to be, you know, decades of looking forward at, you know, if we relocate any one use to a certain spot, what does that free up and what now becomes, you know, that existing well, how does that get reused in the future? And so that's, that's something that will be part of that report.
Okay, Laura.
Thanks, Chuck. I'm interested to know what, if you set any particular goals or criteria for how you make the decision about to relocate? Whether that be, you know, shared resources or footprint of the site or how many, how much swing space you might need, you know, what, what are you considering?
Yeah. So, you know, right now we're still kind of in the basics of, you know, what, what is a usable site in terms of, you know, if it's D P W operations, if it's police and fire operation, police war fire. And then, you know, we have much, a lot of other, you know, town departments. So we're also looking at C O A, looking at library, we're looking at, so existing.
All, all.
All of our.
And then water, the treatment plant as well, is that?
Yeah. So there's a small element of that for this one. We've actually done other studies that have looked, you know, specifically at the wastewater plant. So we're, we are incorporating that into this study. And so we're looking at that again. That's a, that's a tough one to move, but if you have ten acres for that one, you want to try some recharge, we can do that. But yeah, we, we are looking at, you know, all existing kind of uses for town.
Climate action vulnerability plan, which is just in the works now. And I know you're involved in that too. How do, how do you overlay those two things?
Yeah. So there's, there's a lot of competing interests and different things. So we're, what we're trying to do, and that's, I think, you know, part of the reason why Nate and I get roped into a lot of these different studies is to make sure that they're all coordinated. So that's kind of our job is to make sure. So we, we are looking at making sure that we don't, you know, say that we're going to do a D P W facility deal in the middle of, you know, where we're going to have ten feet of tide.
Yeah, it starts to get less expensive maybe to consider moving the treatment plant.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, it makes me see how we're going to be able to dovetail all that together, but it is part of the, part of the work.
Thank you.
So Nate, could you describe exactly what you mean by facility? Does that include, for example, the water system or just the water treatment plant?
So just the part infrastructure. So our buildings and facilities primarily what we're looking at with the facilities master plan. You know, we've done studies where, where we looked at our water and sewer infrastructure, water mains, sewer mains. So those were done previously and we generally have a roadmap for renewing, you know, both of those systems. Like Chuck said, we've done a previous study looking at moving the, or sending our flows, I should say, to other treatment facilities in the area. And now we're looking at, you know, relocating potentially to another location in town with our wastewater plant. But those are very much they, yeah, they kind of all go together where you'd kind of classify water and sewer more as in general infrastructure, utility infrastructure versus you know, buildings is really primarily what we're looking at with the facilities master plan. And I would say we, we are, you know, there is an open space master plan and stuff like that. So we are making sure that that also will get captured. But it's not necessarily the main point of this study.
So for example, if I may run, there's a brick building next to the high school. It's, I guess, what was used to be the water treatment plant? Or it's used to be some kind of a.
Yeah. So that was, yeah, that's what we call home station. So that was the old water department building and used to be the, would access the old well. So there's a octagonal building behind the Lincoln Street well that's out of, you know, it's been decommissioned for a long period. Kind of our understanding of the history of home station was that, I mean, it was used until the construction of the high school or the, the update to the high school. But something happened and D E P told us that we had to vacate, the town had to vacate that building. That is a possibility of looking into of what could be done or if it could be resurrected. But, you know, it, it's been an abandoned building for a number of years. So it's in a pretty, you know, rough state right now. And we take quite a bit to resurrect that, that building. And it's a very, yeah, it's.
I have the records on somewhere on a hard drive in my. I can give you the G P.
Yeah, absolutely.
Consent order.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Other questions for Chuck? I know I sent you some questions from Mary. Did you, were you, I know she's not here. Do you have, I don't have in front of me, but did you have them?
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess there wasn't really anything specific. One of the specifics was compost. So again, I'll, I'll just wait and we can, you know, hash that out. But, you know, just in general, stuff that D P W has going on, the field, I think, was one of the ones. So we are under construction for the field of that upper pine, upper pine, but on Pine Street. Things are going well in terms of the construction. I will say that we did find a hit of some contaminated soil. But it was mostly reflective of hydrocarbons. So probably some sort of diesel or gasoline or something that was dumped on the site at some point. Not anything that was underneath the cap or, you know, the stuff that we were trying to avoid getting into when we started this project. So right now we're in the midst of testing and when we get the testing back, I know what we need to do with the soil there based on our website. And go from there. Yes. And this was all anticipated. So we have the provisions within the contract to handle, you know, however, the testing comes up for that, for that soil. And what we found overall on the cap that, that there was more soil than anticipated. So we didn't have to even get close to the actual liner and we were able to leave more of a buffer between the liner and, you know, the, basically the, the grubbing, so stripping off the top. So we're able to get rid of all of the, the grass and, and plants that had grown in. So that, that was fortunate that, you know, basically we had a very a lot of protective layer there. So that work, that works ongoing, you know, generally on schedule. We'll see what happens when we, you know, find out what we have to do with the rest of the soil on site. I guess just real quick, obviously, I'm sure you've all seen the work on School Street. It's ongoing. We should be wrapped up in the next few, few weeks. Sidewalk work went well. Obviously, the door and traffic is, is not ideal, but I'm trying to get through it as we can. We will have a update probably in the next couple of months on the color work out front. We, we believe that we have all the funding in place with additional grants that we were able to receive. But we're working out a few details on that. So we'll, we'll be back, I'm sure, to discuss any of that work. We will in the next couple of weeks have a update on the rotunda. So if you guys are aware, the rotunda, you know, damage that we sustain in the piles underneath it are ready to be replaced. And so there's an element of how high do we need to raise it? So that'll be a future meeting with the select board and I'm sure you guys will be interested as well. We, our consultant on that project has given us four kind of alternatives. So those would be along to the general public in this like word to decide on. P F A S, I'm sure all of you guys are aware, there's P F A S regulations coming from EPA in addition to the ones we already have for D E P. We did do a study on what that would mean at the Lincoln Street well. But the EPA rights that are thought to be brought forward soon are going to be more stringent than what we have in place. Be more stringent than what we have in place. So we're reevaluating what needs to be done versus Lincoln Tree versus the gravelly pond site, uh. Which is, uh, approximate to the, uh, work at the compost site in the landfill. Uh, so we'll probably talk, touch on that a little bit more later. Um, you guys were mentioning CST. Uh, we are working with them right now on, you know, what they would need for, um. Sewer and water connections and how we could get that work done. Um, so we're, that works ongoing right now. Uh, mentioned the CZM grant. We're looking at climate change alternatives for the, for village. I'm sure, uh, please go to the town website. And if you have any comments or, uh, additional thoughts, all the presentation materials and everything are there. We are planning wastewater treatment plant upgrades that will work on, they'll incorporate some of the CZM stuff, but. Uh, this is different than, you know, relocating or sending our flow other places. Uh, so we're looking at, um. You know, hardening the plant as it exists today, but that's only a twenty year solution, not a fifty year solution. So, um, work on going there. If you, if you spelled the treatment plan a few weeks ago, a couple of months ago, uh, but we were having odor issues, um, not related to any of that work or, you know, climate change. But, uh, that seems to have been resolved. So it's good. And, uh, that's, that's all I had on my list. So if you have any specific questions on any of those, happy to answer them or any other thoughts, but.
Any questions or?
So could you tell me how, um, you guys track just in general the CWMP plan? So just taking into consideration maybe cell signaling's usage and then like the. The plan that the, this master plan has like six areas that we need to like keep in mind. Like, how do we plan for like Raymond Street? Like where's, do you like have models on what all this looks like? If cell signaling takes this, like this leaves us left for Raymond Street and Smith Point and.
Yeah. So, um, I did provide an update, um, that, you know, I'm sure you guys will be, uh, soon. But so in general. Um, I guess without getting into the detail of the actual flows for, for CST and for the CWMP, as you mentioned there. So there is set aside flows for the limited commercial district. So it was anticipated when they did the CWMP. Eight, nine years ago now, that, you know, there would be build out in the LCD and then, you know, the town could decide to serve it with water and sewer town waters. Uh, so the flows for that are about sixty two thousand gallons per day, uh, for full build out. Um, you know, when we talked to CST, they're, you know, they haven't quite figured out their exact numbers. I'm sure that'll come as part of a site review or, uh, so on, but. Uh, you know, in general, they're looking around twenty thousand gallons. So that would be about a third of the sixty thousand gallons per day. But there's no, you know, magic number for that sixty two thousand, you know. We, what I look at as a DPO director is that we have a permit, uh, for what we can discharge out into our outfall. Uh, and so that's six hundred and seventy thousand gallons per day. So that's, you know, if we were to build out sixty two thousand gallons in the LCD, that's about ten percent of our permanent flow. Uh, but then, you know, that's what they planned for the, in the city of.
And that's on a twelve month rolling average. So not a single day.
Yeah. So this is just averages. Uh, and so in general, um, you know, that, that flow is there, we are running twelve month rolling average right now. It's about three hundred and seventy one thousand gallons a day. On the, uh, wastewater side. So we're not even at fifty percent or around fifty percent of, fifty five percent of our, of our permanent flow. Um, and then, you know, you could basically go through the C M P and there's Raymond Street, there's Smith Point, there's, uh. Uh, out on Bridge Street, there's, you know, there's several areas in town that, uh, aren't, I will say that, you know. I've never had any serious discussions outside of the LCD for, uh, you know, running sewer out to those areas, um. Certainly, um, Raymond Tree would be a very expensive project to get the flow from Raymond Tree into, uh, you know, into downtown. So, um. So anyway, there, there's numbers that are associated with all of those areas, uh, at full build out and at full, you know, you know. Connection to the plant. So, um, you know, we have roughly, like I said, we have fifty five percent right now is our flow. Um, that we're utilizing out of our permit. And if we were to add any of these areas, you know, that number would come down. I will say, we also have several, uh, capital improvement projects that will lower that three hundred and seventy one thousand gallons a day that we're at right now. So, you know, we're gonna be doing on, ongoing II projects as long as there's a sewer system in town. Uh, we also have, uh, upgrades at the plant that I think will contribute to reducing the amount of flow we discharge. Um, so it's, it's a, it's a moving target. I don't think there's any right or wrong answer to how and when. It's just a matter of. We can't go for that six hundred and seventy thousand gallons a day.
Do you guys talk to the board of health in regards to like black and white beach and Raymond Street? I mean, I think they're both related, right? Black and white beach closing in the summer, rainfalls.
Yeah. So it's, I, I know the, I do talk to the board of health and it seems that they have. Very extensive, uh, kind of five program where they, you know, inspect systems, whether it's, you know, at time of sales or whatever. Um, however, it's, at least from my discussions with them, I haven't heard that they believe that the failing beaches are. The result of septic systems so much as, uh, urban runoff, uh, from the drains and, uh, roadways. Um, so, you know, people want to come over their pets or just, you know, animals in general, um, in woods. Um, you know, contribute to those things. Uh, usually, you know, since I've been here, at least, uh, you know, when we closed Stinky Beach, we closed White Beach. Um, it's usually after a pretty good rainfall where we get a big flush out of the, the drainage system. Uh, and that's what precipitates the beach. But, and, uh, that's just a chat.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for the update.
Sure.
Hope to see you, uh.
All right, next.
Okay, um, at this time I'd like to vote to open the public hearing on the site plan review of the compost recycling center at two hundred and one Pine Street. Public hearing notice has been duly noticed and advertised in the cricket on May fifth and May twelve. So I'd like a motion to open the public hearing.
The move.
Raise a hand to open the vote. The planning board will be making a determination that the site plan review is satisfactory to the applicant or the applicant, but CNA will give us a brief overview. Make some comments from, you know, the town planner that you wear.
Yes, Ron, if you don't mind, I, I guess I'd just like to introduce real quick, uh, because DPW, we, we did kind of, uh, initiate the project, uh, several years ago and. Uh, we have Black Earth and Seth from also Lewis, our architects. Um, so I just wanted to say in general. Um, you know, like I mentioned, we did do a citing analysis for relocating, uh, of School Street or potentially relocating it. And, uh, we came to the conclusion that we can co-locate the, uh, compost, uh, facility that's currently operating. Operating at School Street over on Pine Street with the landfill and transfer station operations. So this has kind of been a. Uh, initiative of the town for a while. Um, we'll say, so from a DPW perspective, we hired a consultant. Uh, CMA engineers who did the layout, the initial layout and, uh, review of the process. Both on the composting end, but also in coordination with our landfill operations. There are third party inspector of the landfill itself. Uh, as well as the transfer station. So we do DPW, the town, uh, does report to DEP. Uh, by semi annually, so twice a year, uh, with just ongoing, you know. Observations and inspections that this third party does. Uh, we monitor the landfill itself. Uh, the venting, the, uh, we have monitoring wells on site as well as just the general aesthetic or lack thereof of a transfer station. Um, so that's, that's kind of a general layout and then to both co-locate it with a compost facility also, you know, we have to get that approved by DEP, which the town. Uh, like I said, with our, uh, consultant has gone through that process. Uh, we issued a public RFP for request for proposals. Black Earth, Andrew, uh, was the responsive bidder and the town, uh, at the select board level negotiated with Black Earth to. Uh, have an agreement, uh, for that, for that work. And so that's kind of where we are today. They, they have started construction on site, um, and I'll let them get into the details of all that, but, um, I guess from a town perspective, I guess that's how we buy. Andrew with that.
Uh, Ron, you mentioned give me the ability to share.
Yes, um, your name is Seth.
Well, should I not block this?
Don't fall over that.
Um, thank you. Um, Christina, Betsy, Ron, I've met you all. I haven't met you. But my name is Andrew. I'm from Black Earth Compost. I'm a managing partner owner. I've been with us for ten, eleven years. I run the compost operations and I built the sites. In charge of offering them, in charge of sales of finished product. So Seth here, we hired the Full Saint Louis. They're working with us to help with the site plan review process. So we'll do a presentation just to stress in the project where we're at and then, uh, you know, after they answer the questions.
Um, so I gave a pretty good foundation in, uh, I guess I'm more see of the most of those architects. Um, and working with Black Earth Compost, they've been in business for eleven years. Um, and they, you know, were owned to be the leading compost facility, compost company in New England. Those years, uh, their existing site, I think you're all aware, is over on its school street, which has a number of issues associated with it and. Our hopes is that the new facility, uh, on Pine Street will solve many of those issues. So we already chatted about this, but it is because our P in two thousand and twenty one issue from the town. Uh, Black Earth Compost was awarded that in June of two thousand and twenty two.
We should speak up. Where is the screen we're supposed to face?
The cameras at the top of the screen there.
There's the camera over here.
You're sharing the screen. So you're all.
Uh, in June of two thousand and twenty two, uh, Black Earth's made a, for permit. November of two thousand and twenty three, my, 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 I contacted and entered the facilities. Uh, was it the last month that we realized that we had to create a site plan, which is why we're all here. Uh, just a quick list of some of the benefits for the town.
Um, I'm happy to bring that up. So, uh, we believe that the, what we presented to the select board in two thousand and nineteen was that we save the town about a hundred thirty two thousand a year. Between a number of different pathways. It's a, so Black Earth is paying for the investment in the property. So. Expanding it, developing it, improving the landfill cap so that you can actually do the composting up top. Um, and actually move the facility from School Street over to Pine Street. And those are, uh, largely permanent improvements that, I mean, you don't have to ever move the compost site back to School Street. Uh, so we permanently free up the School Street, um, which is a valuable property. So we also free up DPW resources so they can do what they're best at. You know, working on facilities and that, that's kind of baked into the hundred thirty two thousand year savings. Uh, we, I believe this will improve the transfer station flow. You know, some residents might think not, some like the new flow, uh, but I think it's safer and it actually provides more drop off space for residents. And the yard waste drop off area will, uh, be dedicated for residents. So it won't be muddy like it is now. Uh, the compost facility that we're building is, um, high tech and. I guess state of the art. And I think it's something that the town can be proud of. For to not only show off as an example of how the town can lead in being. You know, ahead of the curve with like organic waste and food waste. But it's a great example for students to come in and see what, like how we can manage our waste better. And also it's a regional facility and the town can float about that. Like. When you talk with other towns, you know, you're like, hey, we're doing this for the Cape Ann region, North Shore region, like. You know, we're pulling our weight. So there's a lot of benefits and residents get high quality compost. So.
Um, jumping to, uh, touch briefly on the existing site, um, I think you guys are all aware of this, the old dump. Um, located north of one twenty eight. Um, and, and Pine Street kind of borders the southwest edge of the property and there's wetlands to the north and south of the property. The dashed line in red is going to be the extent of the existing landfill cap. So let's jump into the proposed site line. I'll try to think this bigger.
If you pull stream that.
Let's bring that up. I'll just say, so we, we have gone, you know, this was a DPW process where we, we did go to, uh, the local concombs. So we have conservation, uh, order of conditions. Uh, we did, like I said, we go to DEP. So we got a post-closer use permit. So they have permitted this use for this site. Um, so these are kind of other things that we've done to get here.
Well, she has a question related to.
Uh, Sarah has a question.
Yeah, I didn't see in your list of permits, but maybe it was there. Um, has DEP's, um, water supply. Um, folks weighed in on, on this or, or are they required to?
So they're, they're not required to, but, uh, when we did have our conversations with, uh, the small plate folks at TV.
Yeah.
That, that's where that conversation, conversation happened. Uh, there, there was no permit to get from them.
They're not in the water supply district. Okay, great. Thanks.
So the quick overview of the characteristics of the proposed master plan. Um, so the tan area is the extent of a new gravel pad that we are proposing. Um, the site is kind of divided into two areas. There's a lower level here where the compost facility is. And then there's an upper level that's on top of the landfill. At the lower level, there's three entrances to the site. Of all twenty four, the Y to allow for two way, two way traffic. They're labeled A, B and C. And also on the lower level, we have the existing transfer station, well, the reworked transfer station. And you has, you know, within the past two months reorganized that transfer station and actually has tested this new layout out. Um, so it, you know, overall the, you know, the feedback has been generally positive. Of course, there's been some, you know, complaints, but I think change is difficult and always be, um. Can, can please everyone. Additionally, on this lower level is the compost building itself that is depicted in image five in the upper left hand corner. And it's a tent structure that is, um, grounded by, or is supported by, uh, foundation of concrete blocks. And then just south of that building, we have the, the yard debris drop off station. Um, and they, that has its own entrance labeled, uh, C. On the upper level, we have the equipment shelter. Uh, this was the use for Andrew's operations on the site.
Yep. Storage of equipment on, uh, station stuff, pipes.
And then we also have the operations trailer, um, right in between the two.
And that's for, uh, employees to work out of, you know, to stay warm, stay cool. And both those buildings, I'll note, uh, they need approval from the select board, um, DEP. So that's, uh, that's pending.
Our initial request for proposal only included the compost building itself. And maintaining the transfer station operations. And one other point I wanted to make about the transfer. Um, so it used to be DPW personnel that would, uh, staff the transfer station on Wednesdays and Saturdays. As part of this agreement and the reworking of, uh, the site, uh, Andrew's, uh, guys have taken over the, right now Saturday's operations. The transfer. So there is an attendant there, uh, still, um, and then once we get through construction, they will be opening it up again to residents on Wednesdays.
The site is secured by chain link fences and gates, uh, locations down at the lower level. Additionally, we've added, um, some trees planted on the southwest, west border for some screedage. And then in terms of the stormwater, the site is designed so that all, um. All stormwater run on, runs southwestern, westernly. Down towards the, uh, this is a new swale and detention bond that is designed into the site.
Yep. And that discharge is down on that side, which is away from gravelly pond.
That was part of our initial, initial design that has been vetted through DEP and Congress. That was part of our initial, initial design that has been vetted through DP and Congress.
Um, as far as sidelining, there are a few dark sky light pictures that will be providing along the new compost facility, three in total at the moment. Any questions on the master plan as far?
So can you put out with the cell towers?
Cell tower is right here.
And that's not moving at all.
So during design, we worked with, um, Crown Castle on, you know, what they would need for access, uh, throughout the projects and. You know, how to maintain their facilities going forward, so we don't jeopardize, you know, any existing contracts that the town has, uh, with the cell tower operators.
Laura.
Uh, I'm, I'm really in favor of the, of the program of the project, I think it's fabulous environmental, um, stewardship and I'm so glad we're. Really thinking about, um, sustainable ways to, uh, you know. Compost and reuse our food waste and keep it out of landfills, I think this is a terrific benefit to the town. I think it's a really smart, um, move to move it away from School Street and here. Um, so my comments are mainly related to the kind of site plan review and the impacts on Pine Street. Um, and the two things that I'm wondering about are, so there are three curb cuts on to the site. And I understand that you're trying to kind of order traffic more in, in the different zones where people will go. But, um, it is on a road with a somewhat rural character that gets a lot of recreational use, cyclists and dog walkers and hikers and so forth. And right across from a trailhead, did you look at all at, um. At consolidating, you know, even to go from three to two curb cuts, um, you are on a curve as well, so I know that the sight land, sight lines that you show in your. Uh, plan appear to be adequate, but it still seems like a lot of curb cuts for this new development.
Yeah, uh, we, so it's best to have the yard waste drop off separate from the transfer station drop off. Um, that's for, because they're going to be open at the same time, so. If they came in through the same entrance, then you would have cars backing up on to Pine Street. So keeping them separate is good for that reason. And really, um, the A and B are kind of like the same curb cut. I know they're separate, but B is really the entrance for the transfer station and A is the exit. For the, uh, transfer station, they're made wide enough to be two ways, but when the transfer station's open, we're only taking in. Like third, third one ways that are twenty four feet wide.
And each curb is twenty four feet wide, so that's seventy five feet of curb cut, it just seems excessive for that. Part of Pine Street, which has very few other curb cuts and so, um. I just wonder if there's a, uh, I know you all are in construction and, you know, we're. Trying to move the project forward, but I wonder if there's a way that. Say one less curb cut, whether it's A and B consolidated or B and C. And you order the way the traffic moves for the site and where the Jersey barriers go and sort of where people move through. I don't know, I'm sure you looked at it with your traffic in here, but that's what I'm seeing in terms of concern.
I, I think the problem is if you have people exiting here.
Yeah.
Out here, then you lose the extra, uh, like, uh, waiting area, so. I, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
But I don't think there's another way to organize it, but we can certainly, like, talk about.
I think there's never only one way and I appreciate that you're, you know, you have some constraints, since I constraints, I would just say if there's possible to go back and take another look at that, because that would have an impact. And then the, the next comment is, um, really doesn't affect your function, but the row of trees that you're showing is screening. Um, I think it is a good idea to have some vegetation in front of the site and that'll help with the, you know, the feeling the curb cuts and the kind of openness, the. The biggest footprint building is going to be quite visible, um, you're showing it as sort of a dotted row of trees and instead if maybe you could. Um, work with DPW or some volunteers to plant just woodland species back there, so you basically have a wooded buffer, a natural wooded buffer and not a row of arboretum or something that looks sort of, you know.
I, I don't want.
Okay, good, we're on the same page about that.
Yeah, um, I think, so we're open to anything there.
Yeah.
I mean, one thing is keeping this line of sight open here, but I think along here you could do, uh, more things like. It's important to remember that the swale is here, so you want some things that are, um, water tolerant.
Sure.
Um, but yeah.
Maple's growing around there, I mean, it seems like you could just have a design and a kind of natural swale area that provides. Even if it's twenty feet.
Yeah.
I don't know if you've got that much room, but that would provide a visual buffer.
Yeah, we don't have that much room, but, uh, we, I, we can certainly do something more than just the trees. I guess the trees here are the bare minimum.
Uh huh.
Um, and originally there weren't even any trees and you decided that we should put them in.
Yeah.
So.
Because that is a big footprint of the sort of, you know, exposed area and the building and so, it'll be quite visible in the way that now.
Yes, I agree, yeah.
Laura, can I ask you? I know alleviate your concerns if we were to minimize, instead of, I think we do need three curb cuts, but if we were to make at least one of them smaller. Than twenty four feet with that.
Something, I mean, twenty four feet is.
It does seem like the one in the middle could be tightened up, but.
Yeah.
And, you know, maybe even the other ones a little bit, but.
See, Y A has to be wider, I don't know what's going on with C, but. You know, I guess, yeah, I would, I would, I think you want to see one fewer, but, um, certainly necking it down would, would help to address.
I think that's something.
Yeah.
So part of the concern now with the curb cuts and, um, actually from A to B. Um, it was one giant cut and I said, wait, 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 that's not going to work, um, so. But both the police chief and the fire chief wanted queuing off Pine Street. So, and then given the fact that you've got some trucks coming in and out to go to that back area, it didn't seem like it was.
Well, that's why I'm wondering and I'm, you know, I'm not the traffic engineer or the civil engineer, but if B and C are one curb cut and you go inside and then you circulate around and you come back out again, I don't, I don't know, you know, I think.
I mean, I think maybe the, the solution would be to cut the curb cut on B to.
Something.
A lot narrower where.
Um, I think that's the area that we can, you know, it, it's not really shown well on this layout for some reason, but the, the area where they're drawing the drop off of the. Organics, uh, not the, not the food scraps, but like the leaves and brush and all that kind of stuff. See, that's going to, the C, that's going to really kind of be its own area, it's going to get cut off from the rest of that, so it's not, I don't think that's really where we can see.
Can you do any more of a woodland screening between A and B, that would also help to minimize that kind of big, yeah, cut?
I don't think we can do that there. But I think we can certainly shrink the, um, to like a one-way.
Okay, I, I would just encourage you to take a look at those, I think, again, I think it's a fabulous program, I'm really supportive of the. Development and, um, just looking to maintain that kind of wooded rural character that makes Upper Pine Street and Chabaco pretty special.
Yeah.
And a resource to the town.
I agree, I like that area.
Is the road paved out there?
And paving ends right about, uh, the.
Right about at A, it's the changes to the dirt road.
I'm, I'm wondering whether. A way of solving pedestrian bicycle situation would be to somehow separate the pedestrian bicycle traffic away from the road traffic. By making a, I don't know, it's not a sidewalk there. A little trail area away from the road, so it won't be that conflict.
And the cyclists, we use the whole road there, I mean, it's a rural road and so you could, you feel kind of like you can use it.
If you get sort of shuttled up around to loop around.
I don't think people will buy by, personally, just knowing that, that area is full of mountain bikers and cyclists and it's a lot of two wheel traffic.
And you have a comment, Sarah?
Well, two, uh, two questions, um. When the large trucks come in with the, the, whatever the largest organics are, where actually leaves, you know. I, I read that you, you think it'll be more even than just in the fall, however it happens, they come in C?
Uh, no, they come in B and access from this gate there.
Oh, okay. All right, um. Okay, that makes sense, and then, and they dump into the, into the facility?
No, so this area here is kind of the carbon area, so that's your leaves and brush. So this is where they unload it here.
I see, and where's the stormwater detention area?
That's on this side, so this is the pond.
It's been, okay.
Yep, and there's a swell and a culvert under here. And the site flow of water comes down this.
Okay, and then my question about the stormwater system that you dug, right, dug like a hole there.
Right here, yeah.
And that, um, previously had, the stormwater was not treated, is that, or is it just overland flow or?
Yeah, there was, um.
There was nothing.
There's nothing, so presumably you're making some treatment off the road, okay. And then the other question back to Laura, Chris's concern about pedestrians and cyclists and, um. Is there, and, and large trucks and dog walkers and, um, is there, I hate speed bumps, but is there some sort of traffic calming? That could be done on that section as you approach this, um, corner and the trailhead and the three entrances, um. It occurred to, I was just in New Hampshire where there's a, or on one-on-one, you come down a hill and there's a rotary and they've put those rumble, uh, sort of rumble strips and then there's nothing and there's rumble through, I don't know. I'm not a traffic person, but I'm wondering if there's some sort of, um, thing that is, that does slow people down. Because Saturday morning, you know, everybody's in a hurry and.
I think that's a great idea, you put like a speed bump, like.
Yeah, or speed bumps might not be the right thing, because I'm, and I don't want to pretend, oops. Uh, maybe can you hit the little X?
I would probably stay away from speed bump, however, the rumble's are by the.
You, you just have to hit it on the screen.
Uh, it's not on the screen.
No, on the actual screen.
Oh, is that because I?
You've hit it, yeah.
The bike and pit committee is working on a long, uh, multi-use plan.
Yeah, so, so if the bike and pedestrian committee is working on a plan, perhaps there could be some, uh, commitment that the compost. Would work to implement it in that two hundred feet or two hundred yards near their facility or some piece of that rather than read, rather than it. presupposing what that should be, at least because, you know, like, I, I don't know exactly what the right word would, but, um, anyway, back to you.
So I, I guess I'll just say a couple of things on that, so, you know, I think we're certainly open to take a look at, uh, some of these ideas. Um, you know, we do have a traffic calming policy for town, so I, I guess I would want to refer to that. Uh, where we could kind of test out some of these and then see which ones work, but the first step of that process would be to, uh, look at the data and collect data, uh, so we, you know, we, we aren't in the. Post-construction phase yet, so we can't really know what's going to happen, but the pre-construction phase, we do actually have some baseline data for that area. And, uh, you know, believe it or not, the, the speeds are actually fairly low. Um, it's a little bit further up, but, um, you know, we're, we are under twenty miles an hour in this area, in particular, in front of the frontage at the transfer station. Is fifty miles per hour and then further, you know, going back towards the on-off ramp is about twenty-five, so, you know, it is a slow area and, you know, people do generally, uh, go fairly slow there, but, you know, that's not said, you don't get. Beaters at all, you know, saying.
Well, you're coming up a dirt road from one side.
Exactly, and there's not, there's not really true traffic, so you don't get the people trying to speed to Hamilton because there aren't, you know.
Yeah, just a follow-up question, so can you show where the line of fencing is going to be across the front of the site?
It's this dark line.
Okay. Oh, so there's, is there a fence between A and B along the road edge?
No, there's not.
Not.
Stop this chat.
There we go.
Okay, well, so that's good and it also seems as though. I don't know what that depth is to your red arrow boxes between A and B, but if there is. Again, some modest amount of room or if you look at, you know, if you can get to the building. I think the wooded edge, if there is any reasonable room to do that would, would help, you know, kind of feel like things are necked down and not quite so prone. Um, and then if there is a plan to look at bike and pedestrian access by the bike and committee, I don't know, Chuck, can we, you know. Can you all check in with them and see what their plans are, make sure we're not precluding anything, maybe even incorporate some improvements that they're hoping to do?
Yeah, we, we'll talk about it. I did present to them in twenty twenty one, perhaps, uh, and they were generally, they liked the plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
Maybe they've come along too since twenty twenty one and have some, some more involved ideas about what could happen.
Any other questions, Christine?
So I guess. Can someone just like regroup and explain, you guys have been under construction, blasting's happened. When did you guys, do you have a building permit?
No, we don't.
Okay.
No, so we've just been doing site prep.
Okay.
I submitted the building permit in June of last year.
Okay.
Um, and, you know, I think you're getting at why we started construction without the building permit or site plan approval. So the, when I submitted the building permit in June, they list all the approvals you need and planning board is never on there. So we went under that assumption and I think the town checked in a few times and it was never, you know, it was still, nope, no site plan reviews, so. That's why we like are where we are now.
Okay, so I guess earth removal disturbance, we haven't talked about that. We not triggered that, has no one talked about that, because that's a special permit versus site plan review. And we're blasting, I know we blasted, so. I, I feel like we've removed or, you know, disturbed some kind of earth. So.
Yeah.
Where are we at that?
We've reused a lot of it up on the top of the landfill, like we're using, uh.
I think, I guess, but I think if the threshold's been met, then there's a special permit that's required.
I would defer to Chuck for me.
I don't think that applies to town-owned parcels, though.
So I didn't get anything from Paul Orlando that said that it needed, um, a special permit for earth movement. How do we blast without?
They got a blast permit, I saw that in the documentation.
I believe earth removal permit is required if you activate any more than fifteen feet. That's the trigger, I believe, without.
It needs a cubic feet.
It's the, I believe it's fifteen, but anyway, so, but I would guess Paul would be determining that it wasn't needed, I mean, we don't have any way to. Do it from.
Hi, when, when this came to me, I asked Paul via email what he was. He was triggering site plan for and he indicated that it was four point two of the zoning bylaw. Note one says that if you're in the LCD, um, and you're doing more than ten parking spaces, you trigger site plan review. And that's all he said.
Okay, so I feel like there's a lot, all he said here, so, I mean, I feel like we need a better system that Paul says this and this is what Paul said, Paul needs, Paul needs to write things down. Um, because I feel like this isn't fair to any of us talking about this, if we, if we know that there was blasting happening.
I have asked repeatedly for Paul to issue a determination in writing like. Most other building inspectors do, so there's clarity for everybody.
Okay. Um. Based on that, I would like to go back to what. Someone said town-owned land. The town project per se, right, I mean, when you look at this agreement, the building's owned by Black Earth. And there's an agreement that it sits on town land.
So, uh, uh, this is definitely been a town project, uh, we, we've gone through several iterations of planning and design, uh, at a town level, uh, we. We do have town appropriation for, uh, certain things. And I would say that our agreement with Black Earth is to operate the facility, but there is details within that agreement where we have basically the, the breakup process should have been. So this, this is certainly a town project.
I completely agree that it's town on land, but the contract between you two is that the building's owned by Black Earth.
Yeah, so there is a breakup process, but we will continue to own the land, they are operating on our land and that's it.
All right, but I guess. The permit is from Black Earth to build this, right, so, I mean, I guess this is a gray area. So I'm not sure that all these exemptions, and I think we've asked this a couple of times, like. A legal determination of where this gray line falls, I don't think it's fair for us to, you know, say, yes, you own this, you own this, and we're supposed to understand how all this works, I really.
There's, there's just no way to do that, because this is a town transfer station of the town land. There's no way that we can disassociate the town with that live. Disassociate the town with that liability. This is a town project.
Oh, and I want you to just soak with the liability, but I don't feel like the blasting, I mean, the earth removal is based on foundation, right? If we're gonna remove something or to keep it on site.
That's not true. This is a stormwater plant facilitated or precipitated after that blast. So it's 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 a whole site. It's not just the building. So I don't.
The earth removal bylaw is, you know, there's exemptions for it.
What's your points?
Point is, I don't see what this exemption is. I don't see that in the assumption. Um I mean, I feel like this needs to be in writing. I don't feel like this should be this kind of a conversation right now. I don't understand why there isn't a memo. It summarizes this and puts it neatly. We don't have to do this because it's a town project and. Building inspector said this. I don't feel like we should have to hash this out and say he said, she said.
Ron. Becky, do you have a comment?
I do. Um it's. It there are no gray areas. This is actually a town project. Um and it's it's. Um unfortunate that this was this meeting was not coordinated also with the select board. To save um. Number of people from having to repeat themselves. Um but it it is it is not gray. It's definitely black and white and it is definitely a town project. We're in a contract. Uh with Black Earth. Um so I guess I'm I'm. And and if there is any concern regarding. How the building inspector functions, then. Those are not, that comes under the town administrator. That is not for us to say how. Paul Orlando should or should not be doing his job. If somebody would like to see a modification. For example, as Christina suggested and Betsy did in writing, those should be. Put to the town administrator who oversees staffing. Um but it's not something that we should be going on about at this point in time. Uh without the town administrator here. But again, it is black and white and it is a town product project. Thank you.
I was just gonna say what Becky said, actually, that is really not our for us to decide who owns the project. We're doing a site plan review here and we should just. Stick to that.
I want to focus on the compost just for a minute. Um. I really appreciate the way the building, the structure is designed, particularly. The floor um with it indeed does work to uh diffuse the odor. That's a wonderful goal. Um because sometimes where I live, I can I get the odor from a school street side, so I think that's really important. What I am wondering about is how the compost travels. And goes to the area where it sits for one or two months. Could you just? Describe that a little bit and um explain where it's sitting for the one and two months and. Addressing the odor issues that might um be involved with that.
So uh. Yes, I appreciate that the current site has odor issues and as I say that. Wanted to put up a structure for five years to prevent odors on uh seagulls. And so here it is. And the compost, the food scraps from inside. Are unloaded inside, which is a major improvement. The entire structure is under negative pressure, so there's a biofilter pulling the air out. And pushing it into the biofilter, which is a better chips and um essential wood. Um. The compost spends, so we blend it with the leaves inside and spends about three to six weeks inside. Uh composting. Like during that time, we get uh pathogen kill, liquids management and odor, we get through the odor stage. You know, there's air pipes in the floor that keep the compost aerated. So not only are you producing less odors because you are aerated, but what is. So after that time, uh comes out the back of the building and throws up the conveyor. To the top of the landfill. And then it appears in these piles on the south side of the landfill. For one to two months. And then it gets screened um kind of just. Near those piles and then stuck the finished product gets put in the rectangle there. And from there it's loaded out, follow the arrows. That's where. Um our vehicles come in for loading out to send it out.
Great.
Thank you.
Where do we consume it? Our cars give it?
Down in the yard waste drop off area, so we'll have a spot down there where you can collect it.
Can you just bring some down?
Correct. Yeah, we just we'll put some in a truck brand down dump it down there. Um the nice thing about all that flow is it. Means the compost stays in the compost areas and it's not being carried over drive areas. Which is an issue now where like, you know, it spills out of the bucket and then it's on the road and then. You know, that makes much. So we designed this with the conveyor. To get up to the top without um having garlic roads.
Those say on the on the odor control, the biofilter that they're installing here is similar to the one that we have down at the wastewater plant. So it's, you know, it's a very much industrial use.
Yeah, and it was designed by an industry consultant that uh was brought on to help. You know, design that stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Sure.
Just follow up on that smell question. So I mean, if in the future something is developed on the other side. I mean, that should contain it.
The other side of.
Fine straight. Like some kind of residential area that wouldn't be a big disturbance.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not saying it's gonna be perfect and never smell because I think when you open the door, some orders will come out. But like that's a management thing where we try to keep the door shut as much as possible. But like what it is down prevent is those like. Long lasting odors that um you know, are just there for all day. So it's more like sporadic odors. So that's. That's where we'd rather be.
And then can I just ask one question about the parking? What do you guys have now? Because I know. Seen them all piled down the access road. So how many do you need now and what are you proposing compared to what you have now?
So we have um so in this we have more than adequate. So right now. Sorry, I'm gonna say in the future. We designed uh fifteen spots for fifteen collection vehicles and fifteen spots for the parking of the personal vehicles. So when a driver comes in, they have a space to park and then the truck leaves. Like right now, we have to pull out a truck and then put in a personal vehicle. And like drivers don't like to do that, so then you're parking down that road and that sucks because then that like two strokes the road. And so it's not something we want.
Is there hours of operations that we should be? Do you ever foresee? Going outside of nine to, you know, normal business hours?
Yes, seven AM, seven PM, Monday is Saturday is the operation hours. Our clutching trucks leave earlier than that, so you generally don't see them um. And then they come back slowly in the afternoon.
So this is a Wednesday and Saturday drop off for the citizens. What is your busiest days on Saturday and there are special times to be obviously the fall is uh.
Christmas over leaves. Yeah, leaves is fall. Um but the leaf entrance is dead cages for that, so there's no Black Earth traffic.
Any queuing uh on the streets with that.
There shouldn't be. There's more viewing space than there is now. Um and then for the transfer station area. For the recycling drop off, I think the biggest time is I've seen is Christmas on a Saturday. And that's what I've seen, you know, but going forward, it's open on Wednesdays also, so that mitigates it. Um we have a staff member on site, you know, kind of helping direct traffic. And there's this queuing space out front of the building. Uh should allow like more vehicles to park.
So is it a significant increase at Christmas so that the queuing, if it did happen, would be very uh.
So in that Christmas time, I think. The nine or ten spots we have out front is about the same as what was there with. People entering the transfer station wrapping around. And I think there's a faster flow now because there's up to six spots. Um parking, whereas before you had maybe four spots. Or drop off in the original layout, so you have six. You know, but people have to walk a little farther, but like they're not crossing traffic, so maybe that's the same. But you know, in those times of years, we'll probably have two people there just to like around that those busy times.
Good. Anything else?
So when people drop off for the trash and recycling, are they pulling through? Were they parking and then backing out?
So they are pulling up the hill and they're backing in against the concrete blocks and then. That allows them to unload from the rear rather than unloading in like the drive area.
Obviously, I've gone for one. Much better. Okay.
And like complaints we received are like not official complaints. It's like someone grumbling out of their car.
I'm trying to understand between A and B, if there's no, if there are two curb cuts, but there's no fence and I guess it's a gravel yard as opposed to asphalt.
Correct.
Which is good. What actually prevents people from just pulling it anywhere between A and B? It doesn't seem that there are any kind of controls on that.
There's a a curve there.
There is a curve, a granite curve.
And we also have signage in there like this is the entrance, this is the exit. And just uh. You know, like for the queuing area, we'll need like, you know, queue lines for the three.
Right, yeah, someone's there managing it. I can see that if it's just open between A and B and it's a wide gravel pad, then people will. Turn around there and you know, it'll just be kind of a free for all.
And that's why Betsy suggested we do a curve.
Okay, a curve.
I wanted something in there because that was not gonna fly.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah. Okay.
I mean, it could be blocks, it could be.
Well, it could be trees in a curve or.
Yeah.
Something, I mean, just keeping.
A couple of sugar maples in there.
It's gonna be sugar maples, unfortunately. They're not saltwater planters. Yes, but um I don't know.
So do you have any further comments before I open to the public?
Um. There was um. There was a waiver request for the fee application. Um which is think is the only waiver you've asked for. Um additionally. Um. Black Earth and the town submitted. Um the old application. And then they also submitted, I gave them the draft new site plan application. With the checklist and that worked.
Yeah, it's great.
Very much better. So um. Anyhow, um it was an experiment.
Is there is there a um with this parking of of the parking up above be subject to the requirements for having? Compact car spaces and thus we should we should waive the that requirement if. I don't know.
It's gonna be trucks up.
Oh, yeah, I'm not saying we should have it. Yeah, so that pave, there's just a parking area, even though you've striped it on the. All right, I'm not gonna worry about.
Yep.
I'm just harkening back.
That's pretty much all.
Here on this screen so I can see if there's any public comment?
Yeah.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to open up to the public. Please raise your hand, use the electronic hand raise feature and uh. Make your comments brief and try not to repeat something we've heard. Any comments from the public? Done. There are none. I will um. Take a motion to um.
So I had suggested in my memo. Um one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight conditions. You've also talked about um. You know, um perhaps exploring with. Um bike and ped, some some movement to slow traffic. Um. What else do we have?
Narrowing one of.
Narrowing B.
Yeah, you can eliminate it.
Okay, narrow or eliminate.
Then having some trees that are more woodland like. As opposed to.
Arbor vibes.
No, I'm right. May I tag on some of that one, Ron? Do.
Uh maintenance issue?
Uh no, it's not a maintenance issue.
They'll die.
It's a it's they just look like they don't look right.
Right.
So it's a woodland, I think you're after. Um may I just continue what you were saying about the wood? If it's possible to do a wooded buffer between A and B and B and C, assuming you need to keep. I think that would be more appropriate than a granite curb for this, which is a fairly urban. Kind of a treatment versus a, you know, I think a goal should be to protect the. Um kind of scene effusion of the rural road and protect it for recreational foot and bike traffic. So to that end minimizing the curb cuts, minimizing the span of the curb cuts. Using a native wooded buffer instead of a built buffer wherever possible. All kind of um. Reduce the kind of visual footprint on the road.
No, you can you can keep it open and then if somebody shows up, you can and then close it.
Um a couple of other questions on Betsy's suggested um out out conditions and that is. Um. A suggestion to have not have the. Large uh trucks from the composting coming and going during the transfer station hours. To prevent the sort of traffic conflicts. It was that that's in your list. Is that a? Uh or maybe at least this, well, maybe let's take them as Wednesday or Saturday and one might be easier than the other to.
Yeah, in general, we limit traffic when transfer station will be opened, kind of like what we do at the current site. Um. But I can't say that there'd be no um vehicles because like our collection trucks throughout every day. You know, again, they're out before. Um. You know, transportation's even open and then they come back in the afternoon. So. I can't. I agree to that because that's that's limiting the operation too much, but like I said, there'll be someone on site to help direct.
So can we be assured? I mean, we can write this into the permit, but we need to be assured that you're gonna have somebody there. Particularly during those hours.
That's in my contract.
And then, yeah, the second piece is the dark sky compliant lights. Do the lights need to be on at night?
Not necessarily. I mean, um I'm all for. Seeing the sky over there. I'd say maybe it's a security thing. Um.
I mean, maybe we could write it such that they are um. Off after. Uh dusk or something and then if that needs to be modified, you come back and you talk to us about it if it's really a security issue, but. I think that there's, you know, it's a wooded area and and light trespass. Well, they'd be on for, yeah, no, but you use them at four o'clock in the afternoon in the winter. Yeah, oh, wow. Yeah, sorry, eight PM. Right, sorry. I'm thinking it gets dusk now, forgetting about it, but um some sort of. You know, so you don't go out there at eleven o'clock at night and it looks like a.
Yeah.
Football field.
Yeah, I mean, eight PM sounds reasonable. Shut the lights off.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you can motion detectors too after that point.
Sorry, I'm just gonna add to the lighting conversation. Motion detectors, ordinarily I would go for those except for I think there's gonna be some activity around there, animals.
And so forth, so I would advocate a clock. Um and set up time that we can agree to that's reasonable like eight o'clock. And secondly, the lights, unless you can tell us a reason, the light should not shine onto Pine Street, they should really just be in your yard. So they should not be casting light onto Pine Street.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's fine, I think, so we're planning on having one in front of the front door. Let's try to secure it then, we're gonna have one in like the transfer station area. Again, trying to secure it then to make sure people aren't like illegally dumping. And we have one up uh like in our operations area, so people can walk around, you know, to the. Operations trailer. So I don't think those would cast light on Pine Street, you know, like the the cone of light wouldn't.
Betty, you have a comment? You're muted.
Thank you, Ron, um I was just wondering if Chuck has any. Input regarding town owned facilities and lighting. Um and how that's handled, that was just my thought, thank you.
Uh so certainly on other. Um as we, and we have lighting, um I don't think we have a typical town standard, so I think the dark sky compliant and you know our. Streetlights and whatnot are on, uh you know, the astro clock so we can turn them off at certain times um or. Um they come on only when it's dark out, not 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 day burning, but LEDs you can get. You can dim them quite a bit as well, that might be something to consider. So yeah, we can certainly give you kind of our specs, but.
Yeah, I I'll issue that.
And Ron, if I may. I just wanted to say, um thank you Nate, and I'm sorry, I didn't mean to be excluding you because I know you both. Um have extensive degrees and experience and all this, so sorry, I should have said both of you, thank you.
Okay, so if there are no more comments, I'd like to move to close the public hearing and then have Betsy write a decision that we can um. Look at in our package for next meeting.
Okay, well, in that case, if. I would suggest not closing the public hearing, continuing it.
While closing the public part of the public hearing and continuing the.
The deliberation.
Okay, well. Okay.
Whatever you think is the.
Okay, I generally, if, if, so if you have somebody from bike and parking. Wanting to participate at the next meeting and you've closed the public hearing. Then and we're reviewing a draft decision that also may include them, then it's kind of, they don't have the ability to comment.
Okay, but we're writing it.
But but so I'm gonna write a decision, you're gonna continue the public hearing to the next meeting and then you can vote.
In the meantime, you're gonna get bike and ped to.
Yep, yep, I am, and the next meeting is June twelve.
Or we have a public hearing on the sixth, but.
It'll be the, it'll be the regular meeting June twelve, unless we're doing. Public hearing.
So why don't we do it at six thirty? Continue to six.
Uh let's continue with to.
Six forty.
Six forty five.
June twelfth.
Yeah, a motion to continue the public hearing to June twelve, that's six forty five. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Oh, he's gotta quit.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, um I I have two things, uh to just based on the comments you're putting in for the. Uh draft decision, um one is is related to what you said about having woodland between A and B. Don't think that's a good idea because um like it's already gravel driveway and like there's not gonna be much like root space in there. And also we were expecting to have that open originally, just for like operational line of sites. Um and also bringing trucks in to like bring the leaves in, so I think it's better to leave that as like the urban. Curve you mentioned. Um so that, uh the other thing is, I just wanna talk about the water supply. Uh question because it seems to be a big question town. And like we worked with a consultant and like we've been testing for PFAS for. Three years and it's like fairly consistent and as you know PFAS is everywhere. But you, so you would need to dump about. Four times the amount of compost that we're gonna produce at this site each year. So we'll produce about ten thousand yards per year, you'd have to dump about thirty to forty thousand into gravel pond all at once. To bring you guys up to twenty P P T threshold, so. It's like the scales are way wrong of like why it's not a threat. Um so I'll just point.
Aside from the compost, I didn't know you were gonna say that, but so just to clarify anything that's just that. Um we, this is a landfill uh that is already in the water supply, so that's not. Up for debate and it has no impact on what Andrew's planning to do on top of the landfill. Um the hydrogeologic study that we have in hand for that area shows that. The landfill itself does not flow to gravel pond, the groundwater is not flowing to gravel pond, so it's not really a consideration that we're worried about for. The immediate future uh in terms of what is already existing at the landfill or what is gonna be there in the future. Um and then all the surface water as we discussed earlier, gets collected at the stormwater and then sent to the opposite way of gravel. So that was all by design, uh thinking about the water line being thoughtful of any other considerations that might be there or in the future. Um so we have, we have taken quite a deep look at this and confident to present the project as is.
Yeah, and I just wanted to bring that up because there's a lot of like, I think misinformation town from this Boston Globe article from last year. About a compost facility that was laying filling paper sludge, which is not anywhere near what we're doing and that's a leaving. So so I want to bring that up.
So um while we're willing to withdraw that.
Could I modify it? The the first one, that's about the wooded buffer. Could I modify that to say that uh granite curb can be acceptable between A and B, we're attempting to. Eliminate our neck down curb cut B and that we would wanna take a look at thickening the wooded buffer between B and C. To make it more of a visual screening, so at least if it's truly, you know, ideally twenty feet, but as thick as you can make it. Um that I think would help, again, bring the whole thing.
Do you wanna specify granite as the curb, I mean, it could be by children.
No, granite as the curb, I think is the, if you want a durable yard, it's gonna be granite.
Sarah.
Um. This is a question about are are there um restrict, I presume there are restrictions in the town's agreement with Black Earth about what materials can be composted. So you're not gonna be doing wastewater sludge or paper sludge or. Fly ash or something like that, so therein lies the fact that there's not PFAS source in your material. So um just. No, okay, great.
Hey, so I think.
So you, there was a motion to continue to six forty five on June twelfth. And did that get voted?
I think we just, I would like Paul's, a memo from Paul outlining as we discussed.
A memo from Paul.
About the applicability of the.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
So on applicability of.
Special permit, but the reasons why special permit wasn't needed. And I think it should be part of the decision. Well, it's on public record and then we'll follow up with Greg tomorrow, please.
You have a motion to move.
Move the public hearings. But seconded, all those in favor?
Great, thank you.
So you'll get a draft decision from me, hopefully a week before the meeting.
It's also easy to go up there and look at it, so. If you haven't seen it.
Yeah, I'm up there, you know, eight A M to three P M most days, all this week, I don't know, send me a text. Make sure I'm up there, but.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We can read the public hearing um.
Introduce Babe Dingle who is working with me, um she is a. Going to be a junior at McAllister College and she's an economics major and. And giving her data and she is punching it into memos for the. Um MBTA zoning task force. So we are getting information from various department heads and um most. Most recently, a lot of data from um the assessor. On um all kinds of units um and nonconformity and. She's been analyzing nonconforming lots, there's just a lot to look at, so um anyhow.
Analyzing what and how, do we have, do you have criteria?
Well, um if you read my memo, um I have MBTA. Community multifamily zoning districts. Um so the data includes school department data, we're waiting for projections. Data on acreage and lot sizes per zoning district data on housing units including duplex and multifamily per district. Uh conservation land per zoning.
So specifically, you said nonconforming, that's what, you said nonconforming.
Yep, she's looking at that too.
That's, that's what I was asking, how was she, what?
Well, we're looking at lot sizes. And we're looking at predominantly lot sizes, but then we'll also get digging into whether we're building this.
Okay. So I guess just, I would like to.
That's, that's our list so far.
The data should be for the planning board, right? The the subsection is for the task force, this should be for the planning board.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you.
Well, I think the task force would.
Yeah, I think the task force is the primary.
Everybody will get it, everybody will get it, it'll be publicly available.
This is in the hands of the task force, it's MBTA communities, they're the ones that are gonna recommend to us. We're not gonna be getting uh into the weeds here, the task force.
We should be getting the information alongside of the task. Yeah. We're the zoning people, we should be seeing what's being worked.
They've selected, they've set up.
I understand exactly, yeah.
So that's where it's going.
We're to be setting some criteria and giving some input. We're gonna be the ones approving and sending it to town meeting, we should be regularly updated and we should have the information hand on hand and we should be discussing it.
Updating regularly, on a regular basis. As long as people read staff memos, I'll be updating you.
Okay, let's uh move on to the uh opening, the um. Like to open the continued public hearing on adoption of rules and regulations, Mass General law forty A. Um section nine, chapter forty one, sections eighty one A and eighty one B in accordance with Manchester by the seat of zoning by law. Public hearing notice, we're doing it, notice and advertising the cricket on March twenty third and thirtieth, the board will consider rules and regulations. So adopter of rules and regulations, so before we start on this, um I have a comment. It seems like we're going in two directions, we have a subcommittee and then we have the town planner who work diligently to produce rules and regulations. So I'm I'm trying to figure out why we can't work together on this, what what's the problem? What we've been trying to do this for years, what's what's the issue? What Betsy was gonna be part of the subcommittee and invited to these meetings and I think there seems to be a disconnect. Now we've got two sets of regulations. So it it seems that we're we're back at square one, what's the board gonna do?
May I make a suggestion? That to answer your question that we, I know that the subcommittee met, we get just a quick overview of what was discussed. I know there was a uh a document sent out. This afternoon.
Yeah, I don't know.
So um.
I think there's a confusion what happens in the meetings and then what happens outside of the meetings, I mean, we decided in the last meeting. That we would meet and go through the corrections that Mary had and try and incorporate them into a document. We did meet and we came up with a table of contents, but there was no communication back and forth that you wanted and then I read the. Agenda and it said a report, so.
Well, just what what's the report is, what's what's been going on? You know, like to know.
We do just updates, I mean, that's just.
You know, we'll be transparent here and find out what it is.
Oh, absolutely, and we just did what we were asked to do at the last meeting we met and we tried to incorporate it. When Chris and I, Mary, met years ago, it was very difficult, we tried to pluck pieces from here that we liked here and try and. Combine them into one document, when you go through the document that Betsy has done. This, the references don't match, they, it does look like it was compiled, so what we had talked about a few weeks ago when we reorganized. Was picking one and going through it and make sure it met Manchester's needs because we've had issues come up and we. Want these rules and regulations.
When you say picking one, you mean picking a town?
Just just picking a town to use as a model, because we we used, we tried to do with combined, you know, six depart, you know, six towns. And it just becomes a jumbled mess, it says, you know, repeated yourself here, it didn't make sense here, it didn't reference, so. What we had decided to do a few months ago was pick a town and we thought that Harvard was a great one, it wasn't wordy, it did what it needed to do. And then Betsy came up with this, so. We met again last week and tried to incorporate everything and there was a lot of good suggestions that Betsy had in it, but we think. Um the subcommittee thought it was just a little too wordy and we don't need all the language for the law. We need references to the law, we can cut down on a lot of paper, people, you know, everything is electronic, you can do a hyperlink right to it, if the law changes. You find it and we don't need to go back and have a public hearing, so we just thought. Betsy's did have a lot of good things, we did appreciate a lot of them, but we thought it was a little too wordy and. Kind of were just trying to get back to where we were starting from.
So. So there is a document that I just received this afternoon and I don't know.
I sent it to Ron, what Mary and I worked in the subcommittee.
So I'm looking at it and it has track changes and the only track change. Um I know you've been quite adamant that there be track change, the only track change I see in the document and I don't know what the base document was, was it? Betsy's document, I presume.
I don't know why there was track changes, because we went back to.
Um well, the only thing I see that is, there's no track changes and I see, maybe it's a hyperlink to Town of Manchester website. That's only, I guess it's a hyperlink, not a track change, so the question is, what is this document and how does it part from what? Um Betsy has put forward because. We are in a public hearing for the drafts that we had and and um. And over and over, there's been a request for track changes and I don't see any, any. Document, so I'm, what I'm led to believe is that this is the, that this is an affirmation of Betsy's article one. Just like, can we just focus on article one, because Betsy's memo, I think, does a good job of suggesting that we should move ahead with article one as we have. Had talked about it certainly a lot and we have them all in, not the run line rule, the uh issue of the um. It's called the taking uh money for an escrow fund.
Forty four fifty three.
Forty four fifty three G, that rolls right off the tongue, um so. Specifically. What are the recommendations on article one that the subcommittee has made? That I'd like to hear them so that we can make sure we.
So the subcommittee still feels that the Harvard document is not wordy and that we did article one. To what we feel Manchester's needs, we feel that the document that Betsy came up with is too wordy and it's full, so I was. We feel that the document that Betsy came up with is too wordy in its whole. So I was. Mary and I were the subcommittee last week. No one else was there. So we took Mary's changes and stuck with the Harvard one. We feel like the one that's in front of us is too long. It's almost twice as many words as needed. Don't need that many words. People are coming to this, new members, the public. It doesn't need to be this.
So can I just clarify that there is, it, you know, so there's a new document with no track changes that came today at.
It's not a new document. Mary and Chris.
But a new to me since I have been on the board.
I didn't send it to you.
There is, just can you clarify for me that the subcommittee met and produced a new document?
Correct.
That we received, Ron received today at some time.
That's wasn't.
So it was not posted to the website. And there's no track changes. Just so I'm clear, because. This has been the drumbeat of the criticism. And so now we have two versions of a very simple. Document. And so unless we, it seems to me we need this to move forward. And I have no idea what's in the new one. I have no way to compare it to the, the one that Betsy has worked on that we've held. Three public meetings for, for, this is the fourth, and we have had no. Except perhaps it's simpler and had less wordy, but unless we, I mean, I. I can't quite see why we throw out something that someone has worked on and start over.
Because it's not a, if you read the whole thing from the, the sites don't match. There's clerks aren't in there. There's a lot of missteps in the document.
There's never been a clerk for this board.
There's always actually been a clerk for the board, Betsy. There always has. So I don't understand where we go with this, but the point is. We've been talking about this for years. This document that Betsy created wasn't the same direction. I agree that people say that they want this. You receive this document. I sent it to Ron. Ron distributed it. I did not receive a copy from Ron.
Well, I sent it to Chris, who was on the subcommittee and I sent it to the vice chair and I sent it to the town planner who started this.
Let's hope you didn't start this thing. The subcommittee started this three years ago, right? So let's just clarify.
What did the subcommittee produce three years ago?
Ron, we've been working on it. We were told to pause until the recodification was done, right? So we picked it up and then the town planner started to work on something else. So is it the job of the planning board people that have been here for seven, six, seven years to determine what? We think is in the best interest of the town or a document that doesn't really, it's very verbose and it's not easy to read. We were taking the comments that were going to take a very long time in a public hearing and we talked about them. So you chose to share the document. It wasn't intended to be a track change document. It was intended to be a document that we've been working on for a while. That's it, in a subcommittee.
So what was the intent of the document? Was the board supposed to see it?
You asked me for a report and I shared you what we worked on. That was it, Ron. This was news to me in the agenda.
So no disrespect to the subcommittee, but we do have a professional town planner on, on writing these rules and regulations and. I think we should really support what she's written. And try to tweak that. That would be, that would be my. Input on this. I don't know if the subcommittee feels differently, but.
Can I try a different thing? Specifically without just worrying about typos and verbose-ness content wise. Specific content, given that you've thought about this, what are the specific content areas in the? The document that we have under review for the last four public hearings that are erroneous or. Should be, could be improved.
So I think there's a lot of sections that are intertwined.
It's an article one, sorry.
So article one, for instance, has town staff. I think that should just be a separate document. The town staff, Greg has forwarded an MOU because you weren't there, so we didn't really even talk about it. So I was waiting to the next subcommittee to talk about the MOU between the select board and the planning board and Greg. So. That is one thing. I don't think it should be in the section. If this MOU changes, it should just be a reference document. It should be not in this one section. I believe it should be its own standalone section. I believe you received that. You know, our proposed section, article two, not in this particular.
I just can't, the fact that it's there. So can you be more, I don't understand the, that's what's, you feel it, can I just? Paraphrase what I'm hearing. You don't think that this section in article one should have, about town staff should be in article one? Is that what you're saying?
I think that should be in its own section. The clerk is actually a position within Mass General law. That's needs its section. So MGL says that we need a clerk. So there are some things that just don't add up. And when you review it with detail, they should be corrected.
So besides that, what other specific things? Need adjustment in what Betsy has provided? Rather than what, so what are the specific? Things that we should, so your proposals that we should remove.
Betsy has a lot of emotion in it, in my opinion. It doesn't state the facts. The rules and regulations should just be, this is what it is. When you look at, we've looked at probably dozens of them. There's, they're just lines. We have paragraphs. We just need, this is what you should do and this is where to find it. We don't need to say. You know, we don't need to tell a story in this. I mean, people should be able to go to this document and quickly and easily find the information. I just feel. This document is a little too. You've got a word through it. It's a lot of. Emotion and, you know, what ifs. I, I don't.
So, so the board said to subcommittee to kind of take this off of the main board. Is it possible that the subcommittee and the town planner could work together on a single document and get it done, you know?
Mary and I were there. I mean, so I don't know. We will, yes, it just, we were planning on meeting on Thursday.
It's coming Thursday?
It's Monday. No, maybe. Yes, Thursday. Yes. Can you do Thursday?
Is that something you could?
Um, I'm here on Thursday.
That's, that's, go ahead.
I have not heard specific criticisms of the content of the document that Betsy's working on. So I was prepared tonight to follow her recommendation for article one and to adopt it. And then similarly with site plan and special permit, which I think may need some. A, a little bit of additional tweaking, but at least article one. So I'm happy to have the subgroup dig into it, but I would like to ask that they take the Betsy's document. And by the Thursday before the next meeting, provide a track changes. Version of article one with the, with the specific changes that they recommend that are content. And, and then we, at the next meeting that we adopt article one, either in its current form or with. The proposed changes that the, the committee spends the time to, to go through. But to me, I haven't heard a specific. With the exception of taking the staff section out. That was a specific suggestion. I haven't heard any other specific suggestions, so. And this, we've, it seemed like we spent a lot of time on, on this procedurally. I'm just talking about article one right now, so. If the subcommittee is going to meet on Thursday and wants to, to do that, but we've been, I, I guess I'm. I have over on the, we've heard over and over that, well, I want to just, I'm not going to talk about the past. I'm going to talk about how we move forward and that's my suggestion.
So with Laura.
So if the subcommittee meets to discuss article one after four public hearings and comes back with a. Consolidated, one consolidated document that we could review and vote on. Can we sidebar that to the subcommittee and the town planner? Let's, they're all going to work together. And then can we get on to article twelve? I'm concerned about site plan review and getting that done. Before CST review. So I'd like to not have what happened, like to suggest that. Article one can be looked at with the subcommittee, but that it not slow down. Site plan review and some of these other critical substantive, because I think article one is important, but it's also kind of process stuff. I agree. And we need to get to the substance.
So in terms of article twelve, section twelve.
Are we talking about the sec, the regs? Because we're in a public hearing on the regs.
Talking about twelve.
I guess we just want to point out that it may not be a town meeting.
Yeah. I think we're.
So, so what, so the reason this might be important is I still think we can draft. Some rules and regulations about site plan review. In the interim, so that at least we have some guidance.
And that Betsy has proposed some in her, in, in this. It seems to me that's the important content that we should.
I mean, it is clear that, that cell signaling does have to get a site later view just the way. Yeah, the composted. So now we just need to set up regulations.
It's a priority. All right. So I think we're in agreement that. Where you will meet and come back with something on article one.
And if we can get, but I'd like to.
Go ahead.
I really think we start with what Betsy has done. We've all reviewed it and given comments to her, so.
And those have been incorporated. I think we can work on site plan review on Thursday too. Right? Like there's any reason why not. And that's great.
Right.
Okay.
So I moved and we continue as a public hearing till June sixth?
Uh, no, I think it's well. Twelve, that's what, eight o'clock? Six forty five for the. So seven forty five, eight o'clock.
Well, the, now the composting, I think, decision will take that long.
Seven thirty.
Yeah, seven fifteen. Seven thirty.
Do we go later? So we go seven fifteen?
Right.
We continue to seven fifteen.
Yeah, which was.
There's second. For those in favor, any discussion?
And if we have comments, we can get them too. Betsy through, to the committee through Betsy.
So MBTA communities. Known data points. Mary had a bunch of items that she wanted to break up, but she's not here. But could we get an update on the task force? Is that starting? Any news? No news on the task force.
I think we need to, maybe Ron, you and I should sit down with Greg and. Get this thing going.
Yeah.
Yeah, with a select board.
I mean, I was hoping that there could be a meeting.
Wait, 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 so.
No, we're not.
No, no, it's not scheduled that way.
Yeah, wow.
So we had any correspondence from the state at all? Pardon? Did we had any correspondence from the state?
There was a question on our submission that was clarified. That's about it. They wanted to know when the planning board is going to hold a public hearing on the zoning changes. And I had specified in. The submission that throughout potentially the fall and early spring, we would be having. Or spring into fall, we'd be having. Public hearings. So.
And then I think I read that the task force was going to take the summer off. Is that still the plan?
I was in one of the documents.
I would think so. I would think they got to hit the ground running.
I'm just making sure.
Where do you want, I think.
So I was thinking either June first or. June eighth. For. First meeting.
Move task force?
Yeah.
Well, I guess you have to, um, get the information out to.
Well, I was supposed to be with Tiffany today, but she had kind of a family emergency, so I'm meeting with her on Thursday. To talk about the planning board website and also the task.
Task force will have it separate.
Yeah, yeah.
Or anything else on the three A?
Um, I do have one.
Yes.
And that is, given that the task force and the child is a challenging. Topic and there's a lot of. Eyes on it. I would suggest that the task force members all have state town emails. Because having. Had to do freedom of information requests during the school building projects from my personal emails. It's not fun.
Good thought. Could you run that up? Anything else?
It also just, it keeps a real delineation. It's the first meeting, so the, so the interviews and the selection of that large members just happened. So it seems like we're. On track as far as that schedule. Maybe one of the early things they do, just a suggestion is to have a. You know, there's a get organized meeting, but also how about a coffee, like meet the, meet the forty A task force? And invite kind of an open house.
Bring your nose.
Bring, bring your box of chocolates and it could be on Zoom or it could be at the high school or. You know, I just, I just think it's nice to put a name with the face and people know. I'll leave it to you experts in organizing how you want to do it, but just a suggestion, since one of the first meetings will probably be about process and. How we're going to run and.
Okay, anything else? Proposed Warren articles, discussion, next steps. So most of us went to a. Meeting with town council, was it Monday? So Sarah, did you want to give a summary of what, what's going on or what Betsy? And that's after town, you're meeting with town council tomorrow.
Yeah, so it seems like there are three categories of. Things that we want to take up at a town meeting as soon as we can. One is section twelve. Because it includes site plan and special permit and Dover amendment. In particular, and accommodations, those sections which we don't currently have. And. It then solves a bunch of the administrative issues. So that's the first issue. The second issues are actual just typos. So I went through Betsy's memo and identified a few that I thought were more in the typo category. This, they didn't make it in like the cell signaling. Section five modifications from April of. Twenty twenty two, just never made it into the draft. That's just a typo. That's an example of a typo, what I call a typo. Omissions, errors, errors.
Town meeting.
Town meeting approved and just did, it got into the document. So that's the second thing. That's, doesn't need a town meeting to fix. Right. But anyway, the, there are a bunch of those. There's also like. Section one oh three point one instead of ten point three point one. That's a typo. So then there is references and there are not doc, ref, cross-references and. Many of those are solved when we pass section twelve because the sections one through six that we did pass all anticipated. A new section twelve. And so when you do that, you solve a bunch of those problems. And then the last category, so I guess or four. Are things that are legitimately wrongly numbered. So either didn't get changed or mostly because of the renumbering. That we didn't catch. And many of those are in sections eight through eleven. Which we just simply renumbered, but didn't do anything to the body of those sections. So we moved. Things into, for example, energy, special energy, you know, wind and solar section. Just from, one was in section four and one was in section six. We remove, we moved those in. If they had a reference to other sections in the bylaw, we never renumbered that as we did this big renumbering. And so I think those are the kinds of things that need to be addressed. that as we did this big renumbering, and so, um, I think those are the kinds of things that need to be addressed. Um, let me, can I just finish, the other piece that is, was sort of prompting us, um, who, and we did meet with Jonathan from KP Law, who I think understands that collection of things, um. The other thing is whether or not cell signaling is subject to site plan review in our current bylaw, and, uh, uh, we moved site plan review applicability from six to twelve, but then didn't pass twelve. Um, but the table in section four of our allowed uses does have a note that all projects in the LCD are subject to site plan review, so I, um, I think it seems that it's, that we do have applicability force, but, and furthermore, I think there was an agreement at the, at this subcommittee meeting that we would post a public hearing for June sixth, Tuesday, June sixth, to, um, make sure we met all the deadlines in the event that we have a pub, a town meeting at the end of June. For the, for the purpose of adopting, uh, zoning section twelve and fixing of, uh, renumbering cross-reference sections. So I believe that, uh, hearing was posted for June sixth. Um, Betsy, things I omitted or other updates from KP Law?
Well, um, I think we also agreed at that meeting that if twelve was going to be con, um, questionable or confusing, then the, we would consider coming back six point five, which is site man view, um, so we would, that's been posted.
As the fallback position.
As a fallback position, so, and Jonathan, Murray and I have been working on dealing with the, um, cross referencing and the typos, so.
And we were asked to give anybody who, we were, it was Chris, myself, Ron, and Christina and Mary, to give any comments that we had on, um, to give a list of our changes by last Thursday, we were in that meeting, so I, I sent a big list to you, did you get them? We did send it by email, but I can double check, I'll send it to you again. I said it to you, there was that horrible thing where I sent you like three versions, and I kept saying use this.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Four versions.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, give you a hard copy.
That was removed. So we removed associate members.
We haven't voted that.
I need to vote.
Yeah, that's why you're having a hearing.
Right, so the other, um, part of it was the, the feeling of the five of us who met is that let's take out the controversial associate members, or whether they're, just they're controversial a little bit in there. And then who appoints them, and let's take that off the table, so I don't think we voted that, but, uh, that was the feeling of the five of us that met. So, we could vote that tonight.
Listen.
So we're.
Laura.
Just trying to, um, understand the, sorry, through four, when, and the last one, I think you mentioned was renumbering. Yeah. Now the different category, why are not all those things like cross-references, renumberings, all considered typos at some level, because they don't change the substance, I think.
Legal counsel was consulted. A big, legal counsel was consulted, I mean, basically said, no, they don't count.
The reason being, can I just, in, the reason being, if you say, if you have a reference to section two point two, but the actual reference is three point two, two point two has meaning, and so therefore you're effectively changing the zoning bylaw, even if you're fixing it.
Mm-hmm.
And so the, the, or the substance of an article or a warrant article would say in, on page twelve, we're in section six, to change the reference to two point two to three point two, so you would be a very, uh, bounded, uh, set of changes. Okay, so I'll, I'll take the lawyer at their expertise, and, um, if that's the case, and we need to categorize some things as not a typo, other things as, you know, fixing this or that, is there a way to bundle these for public consumption, so the stuff that we really are trying to get the content out and weighed in on is one thing, and then all of the other fix-it stuff is another thing. So that, and, and maybe we need a preamble that says, this is all fixing stuff, it's stuff that's number wrong, but the ultimate thing is that you clean it up, there are no changes to use, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah.
And then here's this other stuff, which we want to.
Yeah.
Two articles, yeah, absolutely, okay.
Great changes, because they're going to be different. Whether six goes in or twelve goes out.
They're not going to be.
Is in which article?
Whatever passes.
Things are going to be different, yeah.
So, Ron, can I ask person through you?
Go ahead.
So we talked about compiling that list and having it available. So we wouldn't have to repeat it, so I didn't see a compiled list.
Uh, the last planning board meeting, I gave a compile was based on what I had.
No, but Sarah said that.
Yeah, do you want to share that?
I haven't, I haven't. I can, I can absolutely make, we can make copies, or I can, I can put it on SharePoint now that we've discussed it, it's, um, I used Betsy's, um, I did two, I did, I put three categories of things, I took Betsy's memo, the, each line by line, and went through my assessment of whether it was, um, correct or not, and then I made a suggested motion for, um, for the change, so there's like a renumber this to that, and then I added in, um, the list that I had from Mary's email of November thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two. And, um, there were only three things there, and then I added, um, two, two things that were from my, um, uh, read as well, so all of the things that I identified were re, besides the section twelve adoptings, were solved by adopting section twelve and doing administrative renumbering. I did not find, and I did not address, uh, the parking lot things that we have talked about, like removing inclusionary zoning. Um, so there is one, that, just to clarify, there is one section, and this is going to be for the attorney to figure out that we renumbered, and then when we removed it at the town meeting, we removed it using the old numbers. So I don't know whether it's in or out. The simplest thing to do is just delete it a- again. With them.
So I was just wondering if Betsy, seems like you're super busy, so, so compiling a list, does it make more sense for something for Gail to do? If it's just compiling a list?
I think the attorney was going to do this, right, they, he's, and they're going to meet.
He has all the lists.
We talked about having a complete list, so I'm just wondering who's going to give us a complete list?
Well, it will come out, want to come at the public hearing?
So the point we talked about at the meeting is getting a.
Well, at the meeting, Mary had talked about, oh, yeah, that, this and this and this, but.
Finished talking.
Excuse me.
We talked about having one complete list, so at an updated basis, so when we would see it, we wouldn't be looking at the same things over and over again, so we have a list from Mary, a list from Sarah, and a list from Betsy. We had talked about the meeting coming up with one list, so we could see them all together, this is, my opinion.
Well, no, I bet she's going to put together a list, she's going to compile it with the, with the.
Now I'm not sure who's doing, is it Betsy, is it the attorney, like, that's, that's.
I think it, the, remain. At the last, at the last full board meeting, we asked that KP Law be the point for, for doing this, and that Betsy would feed her information to him, and it sounds like they're meeting soon, so then we'll get a list of the, of the.
I don't recall that KP Law was going to compile those.
That was absolutely on the last meeting, we talked about getting KP Lot, there was a motion to have KP Lot do it.
To change them or to compile the list? So I think the thing is, where are we going to have this document that we can check off at the end to make sure it got done, because this is the problem, we, we had track changes, we had some track changes, but we had no list of what we needed to change, so we talked about having two things, a list and then the track changes, so I guess where's the list and who's doing the list?
Now who?
Okay, and then tomorrow, so was there a memo that we got feedback for the changes?
I think the, now the next step.
So is that maybe what's coming out of the meeting tomorrow, are you meeting with them on Zoom or in person? What was, so is it here in the building or on Zoom?
Also, uh, it's going to be a phone call.
Do you think we should all be part of it?
No.
You can, you can let Betsy and KP Law do it, and come up with a list of, um,
I mean, we're talking about things like, just to give you a sense, replace the references with that section seven point, this is my list, I, I, the attorneys need to weigh in on this. With, replace all references with section seven point five with twelve point five, or whatever it is, um, a motion in section eight point three point five point six, change six point four to six point two. That's what I'm thinking the list is going to be, and the attorney is going to go through it, and those are, that's what my list said, then he's going to say, no, Sarah, you're crazy, that's not that, but that's why we gave input, and everybody was invited and remains invited to do that.
So we think he's going to give us line by line memo, this is a typo, this is, needs a motion at town meeting?
That's what we're going to do.
I was expecting a shorter version before that, like, I think we were talking about whether the previous motion that we put in there that we could fix the typos covered this, this is the most, this is the email that I was waiting for.
I think he said that it was not, that, there are two things, so that, just to clarify what Christina was saying, the, um, first, one of the town meetings that we had, we said renumber section one to section two, and any subsections and any references there too. When it went to the Attorney General, the minutes from the town meeting didn't include the subsections and references. So KP Law was going to check to see if that covered us, that's the first thing, and I think his answer is, it did not. The second thing is, at least when I went through this, I did not find, um, actually any, uh, any or more than one case where that was really the problem, so I think it was, at least in my opinion, it wasn't, didn't, wasn't the big solution I thought it was going to be. So.
Uh, did he say that at the meeting, or are we still waiting for a memo, did I miss?
I think they subsequently spoke, Betsy and the lawyer, is that correct?
Mm-hmm. So I just asked if there's a memo, and I was told, no, you were talking tomorrow, I feel like I'm not getting an answer, I thought, that's the question that I asked.
You know, I think they spoke, and that was the ruling, I think he was going to get back to us, and he got back to Betsy, I think that's how we.
I feel like this is just not great communication, I feel like if we're trying to all hear the same thing from town council, and we ask town council something, town council should write us an email, and it should be distributed, I don't feel like this is a great process here at all. What I asked a question, Betsy said no, and then we have to keep talking about it, and then all of a sudden there was an answer, so I just don't understand why we ask a question, they answer it, we all get an email, it's not that hard, I mean, we're making, we're wasting a lot of time here, in my opinion.
Well, we're trying to do it as efficiently as possible, if those two talk and we get the answer, what difference does it make if we all hear that same answer? I don't get it, I mean, that was.
And they said you didn't have one.
I have been part of the meeting, don't want to be part of the meeting, would like to get to an efficient way to capture the changes, um, I still uh, hold that having our council is the most efficient way to do that, because they are lawyers, they read through entire legal documents, they have systems and processes and people to check that the documents hold up, and, um, I, any one of us should be able to ask any question we want, but I don't feel that it, um, uh, moves the process forward, having a kind of, for me, what feels like, it would, it would be over documentation for me, I would like this staff to be able to kind of work through their process workflow, ask and answer questions with council, and then council do what lawyers do, which is produce a document that will stand up and has been checked, and, um, I certainly am the volunteer, I'm not the person to do that, I think. But I just want to say, we're all competent and qualified volunteers, and for, this is the cost of doing business, you know, working with our council, so that is what council is for, and so we, we are providing all of us a lot of value to the town, and so I think a modest amount of, you know, the cost of doing business with our general counsel is appropriate in the interest of the town and, uh, moves for what we're trying to do, which is to clean up our zoning and make it make it suitable to the modern lives that we're living in.
Chris.
To Laura's point, this, council's going to have to review this before town meeting anyway, so better to have them prepared, and then we do it rather than have us try to do it, and have them change it all, because it's not correct, so, I think this is exactly how to do it.
Well, I agree, anything that will help take some of the burden off our big workload coming up, so, would be helpful, I'm, uh.
So I'd like to make a motion.
I was going to make one, but go ahead.
Um, I'm going to make a motion that, um, as we move forward to the public hearing for section twelve, that we strike um, the provision uh, about associate members, which in the, um, is at the, the sentence at the end of the proposed twelve point three point one. Where I see it right now. Um.
Why don't you just say all references?
And all references to, to all references to associate members. I was hoping we didn't have to renumber, that's what I was looking at.
I second that. Anybody would like to discuss?
I'll say I still think we should have associate members, but I think in the, in the, in the light of moving this.
Well, are we willing to change?
No, I think we should keep it, oh, I think we, I made the motion.
And I second it, any discussion?
Can I just ask, because I'm not part of these meetings, don't need to be, um, the purpose of removing an associate member, which I don't, I don't understand what the controversy is about that, but it's something that we need to.
It's because.
Hearing about our.
Because there was a, a kerfuffle over who votes them in, was it a joint decision of the planning board, uh, was it a district thing, or a joint decision of the select board and the planning board?
I tried to get around to disagreement with the press.
And the other piece is that I do think that section twelve is really important, that we pass in its entirety for a bunch of reasons, and I do think that the public comment we heard, there were some people who felt that associate members was us, was us abdicating or relinquishing our responsibilities, regardless of how they're appointed, um. I don't think that's the case, I think it can be explained, but I don't want to risk section twelve, which I think is really important for something that is new town, to the town, and could be, uh, a sticking point for adopting section twelve, so I think, to me, it's twofold, it's the, how's it appointed controversy, but the fundamental, uh, just doesn't seem to me to be worth the, we can amend it later.
Yeah.
We will.
Can I, may I just respond to that briefly? Um, so I, you know, I can get behind the reason why we're doing this to it forward, but I will say that I hope we don't parse out every good thing we try to do, and, you know, uh, strike things, because.
Yeah, I agree.
Um, I don't think that's in the service of a strong regulation, and ultimately, I hope that we can collaborate between boards and have a discussion with the select board, and then vote on it, and have the vote stand, and then we're done, and, you know, this is one small thing, we have so many more things we need to accomplish, so I will, I'll get behind this tonight, but I think we don't need to belabor things so much, let's talk about it, negotiate, collaborate, just vote, move on, that would be my suggestion.
Maybe further discussion on the motion.
I, so I was just looking through the folders, do we have something that we, for section twelve, explained? It's tight timeframe, what are we going to put out to the public? I was looking for the communication that we used before.
There's communication.
Okay, I was looking for, oh, like, I couldn't find it.
Well, on the motion, all those in favor of removing? All those against? Six zero.
Gail.
Um.
Can I, to, uh, to Christina's point, um, can we authorize one person to write a short paragraph for tomorrow's cricket that says that we voted, we're going to have a, we planned a public hearing on June sixth to, uh, reintroduce chat, the administrative section, and to have, um, to do some administrative, uh, re. To do some administrative uh renumbering. But a very short, I'll be happy to write it, but I I don't think it has time for lots of review. If people are into that. I can run it by Betsy, well, you know, more tomorrow, so I'm trying to keep it so you don't have to work. So I'll be happy to do that, except for John, if that I don't work, yeah. If people are okay with that.
Regarding the public hearing, um Sarah won't be here, so I was thinking that maybe. Chris could take the lead in the public hearing, I'm sure that. It's helped from Betsy.
We have the um the slides from previous.
This means you can't vote on it too.
I can't vote on it if I don't, if I attend, if I watch.
You might wanna continue the meeting to the twelve.
To the twelve.
Yeah.
Another continuing.
Yeah.
Everything.
Okay, it's, it's okay.
Okay, um.
So nothing on the sixth?
Yeah, it is on the sixth. On the sixth, but then.
But the sixth may get to do.
Okay.
Um just a quick thing on the floodplain, just for everyone's information.
In the.
Say by law.
Yeah, there was a draft floodplain by law in your uh SharePoint. Um I also did have a discussion with the person from USGS about the maps. And um. The maps, we have preliminary floodplain maps right now, they will not be finalized until. December or January, which means we. Can't. Adopt at fall town meeting, but it would be spring to May twentieth.
We adopt, yeah, I was confused about that, and we adopt that spring town meeting and uh we adopt a model by law then too?
Well, the. The plans would be incorporated into the bylaw.
Yeah. But there was a model by law in your memo, right?
Which has already been tweaked a little bit, so.
So I guess we had talked about the last meeting that you were gonna come up, because you thought this. Adoption of the floodplain was gonna take a lot of time, I guess that's what I'm still unclear about. Like, when we have to start this, when this process that they have to review.
Yeah, I talked to Betsy today, she said she should start it.
Yeah.
We're not gonna wait.
So I I started drafting using the model by law that for Brodsky had as a base.
Okay, that's not my point, my question is. You said you're gonna get us a timeline, like when, you you said it was gonna take a really long time, I just want high level. We have to have two public hearings, we have to, it's gonna take this long at the state for review, like. That's what I'm looking for, like, I don't understand how long this is gonna take, that's what I think we were looking for. And the other thing about this model by law, I thought. You and Mary were gonna work on it. And then there's an updated one, I didn't know why we weren't using the um state one, but. This is a version two from the state. I think the most up to date one is the twenty twenty version two. Maybe what for Brodsky, maybe his game not after. Okay, the um left us.
Is it possible that the state will have a version three before we go through?
We'll just keep an eye on it, yeah. I mean, what are the one version behind?
She knows on the floodplain by law. Any priorities, I think we kind of talked about them. Put that on, I think we kind of talked about.
I mean, are we as a group gonna talk about what we expect out of? The task force? I mean, I think that's a big deal, they're gonna meet in a week or so, what what are we looking for them to come back to us with?
So um.
I think there was a memo from the town administrator on in February.
It was very high level. I mean, it was like a few bullet points, right? So I mean.
Makes a recommendation, uh you don't have authority, make.
Do you have a specific addition, can I ask?
Yes.
Do you have a specific addition or? Subtraction from the February um memo?
I mean, we have never discussed it.
We actually have. I think you might, may not have been here, but we did have it. Greg came and we discussed it with.
What?
Select board. So I guess that that's, what are the specific? So what are the, how do we move forward? What is the specific um additions or omissions that we should?
Well, I think there should be check-ins, I mean, I think there, we don't really have a schedule, a plan, hearings, check-ins. I mean, that's.
We have two people that'll give us updates and check-ins, and I think once they get going, I think I'm gonna expect. Updates from you guys, what's going on, where the direction, and then take some. Input from us. Bring forward to the task force, I think that's kind of a.
So everyone here is just okay with the memo, as is?
Sorry. Um I'm okay with the memo um and the conversation that we had, I. Think that once the task force gets going, they'll develop a work plan, and then um. Chris and Susan can bring us a work plan and say this is what we're doing and um. Ultimately, you'll also develop some communication tools and a number of public outreach, I mean, public outreach is certainly gonna be. An important facet of this, so I I would expect more detail once the task force gets going and develops work.
Okay. Um liaison committee, task force, working group updates, coastal zone management, any action?
Um action, no, we did have, um there was a meeting of the steering committee in early May, I went to public. I think it was a public hearing, a public meeting of the um same information presented by the consultant team. Uh Greg Petersfield was there and the members of the steering committee. Uh and the work is nearing completion, I. I sent some, they're, the meeting notes are out, they're fairly high level, um so I sent some clarifications of comments that I had provided to Greg. And to the consultants. Um just sort of expanding on those comments, but uh my takeaway is. It's. This is a very high level kind of master plan document with these kind of alternate scenarios for. Short term, midterm, long term strategies about how to respond to climate change, and the short term one is. Common sense, fairly low level of investment, um you know, makes sense, you know, move up your generators or, you know. Waste a hard in the facility, I think Chuck was talking about that tonight, the water treatment plant, the kind of common sense stuff that's not. Terribly disruptive or invasive, not terribly expensive, but then you get into the mid and long term scenarios, and those are much more capital intensive. Those are um. In terms, sometimes require sort of separate deployments, more staffing, and so I think there's. Analysis to be done of the midterm and long term, so you don't necessarily go stepwise, short, medium, long term. You go short term, and then you look at medium and long term and see. What is physically responsible, environmentally responsible, maintaining the town's character, thinking about accessibility in terms of. ADA, in terms of public access to the waterfront. And um really kind of digging into, you know, does it make sense to do the midterm or look ahead to the long term? And there's gonna be a lot of prioritizing that has to happen, I think there's gonna be a lot of communication that needs to happen, but one. Key communication, which I mentioned to Greg in the email, was that. I think it's helpful for people to know, maybe that in order to um be eligible for these grants, and there are, there is a lot of. Potential money out there now with. Infrastructure funding and so forth, we have to have this road plan as a town, so by having the road plan. It doesn't mean that we've selected some strategies and ruled others out. I think there's gonna be all kinds of other criteria that are need to be overlaid on it, like public access and so forth, but. We're doing the right thing in the town, I think, by making this roadmap. Setting ourselves up to be eligible for grants, and then there's gonna be, you know, each one of these sort of bigger moves is gonna require further study. And the last thing I'll say is, a lot of this is deals with town on land, municipal land, and so looking at the long term. I think there's actually a lot of opportunity there to do some. Big things that um. Make us more climate resilient and also make a more livable um and sustainable town too, just a better place to be in the long run, because we can. You know, there's certainly areas of private land, but a lot of this is dealing with municipal land, so it's. We're thinking about the facility plan update and other of these, you know, kind of long term needs. Definitely think layering in the climate resiliency and sort of what do we want to be as a Manchester? That provides some, that preserves water quality, provides public access to the waterfront, does other. Additional benefits, you know, while we're protecting ourselves against climate, I think they're doing good work, and it would. Everyone should, you know, check it out and take a look at it.
Thank you. Harbor management plan and?
Uh the harbor management group has met twice, um. We're uh, the next meeting is. Going to be, oh, we're waiting to hear from a potential consultant, Urban Harbors out of UMass Boston. Who is gonna come and talk to us about what services they provide to do a harbor management plan? It seems to me that it's a inventory, um an assessment of the various state of things and. Uh conditions from shellfish to climate issues, so there's a lot of these things could have come together, right? The task force, the flood, playing like climate, the harbor management plan. Um and uh we're still trying to figure out like a little bit, do we have the, all of the interests represented? Um so our next meeting will be, um and then from this meeting with the the urban harbor folks will produce. With their help, probably a scope of work to and work plan to guide the. The um their ultimate proposal by on believes that they are. Sort of the 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 folks who do this work and um they are, we are authorized to use them. Without necessarily going out for a bid, um which. Which we may or may not do, we've also got a couple other names of of folks, so um. But there, they've done Pay and Arum to Ipswich to um many harbors in between, so um. The, so more to come. And uh um last thing is that we talked a little bit about schedule, and that you really need to see the harbor in action. Um to assess some of the um traffic issues, the whole um. Sand Dollar Cove issue, and that they probably will not have started and really be under contract. So we did talk about about that, whether it was, we should rush um to get them on board, because you really have to see. Sand Dollar Cove to believe it.
Film it for it though.
Yeah, well, it's still not the same, um uh. And um and I think the feeling was. That they could do some of that next summer, I'm. Pushing, you know, I'm a little worried that they'll get very far down the path without having. A sense of the summer traffic issues, uh which I think is the things that affect us as we uh. Have potentially a future site plan review, a special permit. For a chapter ninety-one is that adds to that traffic and emergency response and and those things. So um. Yeah, that's the, right now, I think we're feeling, I I feel, it's my own opinion, and I've expressed it to the group, that. The uh the hand, the um passive um non-motorized boat boats are not sufficiently represented, but. Um we're just gonna try to get MSA.
Good.
Yeah, and um while you're thinking about those boats, paddlers too?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. So I'd be, I'm very concerned about that. Having seen a kid almost die. You know, like, not get almost get that, but I. I watched a child go across the harbor in a very unsafe way, and two seconds later. Boat came through at ten knots. So.
Hey, thank you, um even maps we talked about, rules are right, we talked about. You had a test was, we talked about what it hit me, so it's task force, I put the grant minutes in the pocket. They're looking to uh the test wars, it's winding down. They're going to submit to the select board a tiered water rate schedule for the, to try to get. Uh more money from the higher end users, try to cut down on the water. So stay tuned to see that, uh I think they're going to select for next week. On that uh CPC, and we have not met, I have nothing on that, anybody have anything else? Um approval of regular minutes, uh April tenth, April twenty-fourth. Anybody have any comments?
To approve.
All those in favor? True. Uh other than that, is not, uh next meeting, at the beginning of the meeting, we will have a election of chair, vice chair and liaisons. Please think about that. Um going forward for the year. Like to have a full board present for the. Other than that, I have no other, Sarah?
I have one other thing.
Okay.
It's a small thing, but um maybe it's a Gail could, um years ago when I was on the planning board and other boards. They have name tags, and as Andrew was here tonight, he said, I've met Christina, I've met Betsy, and he didn't know who we were. Um I have mine from planning board years ago, and.
Much in the drawer, Colleen, I think they're in that.
So we should, maybe afterwards, we can go see if they're there, and if um Gail could help get um name placards for the people. Who we don't have them yet, I think that would be really helpful to the public.
Okay, thank you, anything else, otherwise I'll take a moment to adjourn. Any discussion? For John, thank you all.